Questions, we will go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilwoman Martinez, will you please lead us? May we have roll call, please?
Calling roll for Wednesday, March 5th, Reno City Council. Vice Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Dour. Absent this time. Martinez.
Here.
Ebert. Absent this time. Reese.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Shevy.
Here.
Madam Vice Mayor, you do have a quorum for the Reno City Council.
Thank you. We will move into item A3, public comment.
Thank you. Our first item today is opening public comment. Members of the public may hear, observe, and provide public comment virtually by registering through the following link, which can be found on reno.gov/meetings, It should be noted for those in the audience that comments are to be addressed to the mayor and council as a whole. Comments heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the council's agenda. Council may not take action upon any matter not agendized on today's agenda. When you're called on for public comment, please state your name for the record and begin speaking. The timer will begin when you say your name, and you will be afforded three minutes. For those participating in chambers, in accordance with council rules 6.3.11, while in this room, please be respectful. Disrupted behavior from audience members like clapping, yelling, whistling, et cetera, which impede the meeting, may result in a warning issued by the presiding officer. If this behavior continues, you may be removed from chambers. If you're an attendee in the Zoom meeting and would like to make public comment, please raise your hand at this time. And just for the record, Madam Vice Mayor, Councilmember Ebert is present online, and it is 10:02. Our first public commenter today is Terry Brooks, followed by Stephen White.
Good morning. It's me, Terry Brooks, again. And today I'd like to share with you my thoughts on employment and technology and what seniors have to go through. Seniors who have held the same job for a long, long time have dealt with advanced technology gradually through time. If you've worked in the fields of farming, mining, or building, in the fields of such jobs, technology has gradually been improving. And as such technology advances, you are gradually learning how to use such technology as it is improving. That is, if you are still working at the same or similar job. But you might have a problem with a new field of a new job. When you leave your present job with one kind of technology you may not be familiar with, a new job's technology. I remember going from swinging a pick and shovel to driving a forklift. It took me a while to learn how to adapt to such a shift. I remember going from a forklift to a steel punch press. That was another change that led to a bit of stress. Then I went from a punch press to a door routing machine, not to mention a few other changes in between. Then I went through other technologies and had to learn to use a computer. Adapting to such changes in technology made me feel like a troubleshooter. But with help from coworkers, I finally made it through, and there were a whole lot of things that I finally learned how to do. I've found that when it comes to technology, in that road, there is turn after turn. And you'll find in whatever job you have, there will always be more to learn. Technology is a never-ending cycle that will always keep on growing. So we all will always be faced with more that we need to be knowing. I would like to thank you all for listening to me today, and I look forward to coming back if I had to use technology to get here that day. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry.
Stephen C. White, followed by Deanne Radcliffe.
Good morning, councilmembers. Good morning, mayor out there, if you're in the cloud somewhere. Wanted to talk to you today about another federal court ruling by the Ninth Circuit that you should be aware of. It's called St. Goliavich Navist Society in Greenpeace versus City and County of San Francisco, 1991. In this particular case, these two organizations wanted to sell merchandise that we would normally consider to be commercial. Coffee cups, t-shirts, baseball caps, stuff toy whales. They had messages affixed to these items. Now, the city and county said it was commercial merchandise, and therefore they had to go in to get a sales tax license and all that sort of thing, and a business license to sell it. So they take the matter into the federal courts. The group, these two organizations, claim First Amendment protection. The Ninth Circuit came back with what's considered to be the particularized message standard, wherein, when a group or an individual is selling merchandise that is inextricably intertwined with and inseparable from the conveyance of a particular, that's singular, particular political, philosophical, ideological, religious message, in that context, it gains the full protection of the First Amendment. This is why all your nonprofit groups are exempt from licensing when they sell their merchandise. It's the reason why politicians are exempt from licensing when they sell their hats and t-shirts and this sort of merchandise. Now, the reason why this is important is because states across the country, including Reno and Sparks, applied that particularized message standard to artists for many decades. And the reason why I brought the lawsuit against the city of Reno and against the city of Sparks was to separate artists from that ruling. Now, I knew going into that ruling, in those two cases, that we were going to win that case, because the United States Supreme Court had held that the abstract paintings of Jackson Pollock are unquestionably entitled to the full protection of the First Amendment. When we won the case against the city of Reno, the Honorable Judge Hagan came back and said, seeing as how the Supreme Court has held that the abstract paintings of Jackson Pollock are unquestionably protected by the First Amendment, I see no work of art that had failed to meet that test. So there again, you see, and the city of New York argued the same point of law, and the city of Sparks argued the same point of law all the way to the United States Supreme Court, wasting all that tax verimony and five years of litigation. And we knew all along, because of the paintings of Jackson Pollock, we were going to win that case. Now, that's important to understand that. You know, the reason why artists are fully protected under the First Amendment is because their artwork is purely expressive. It has no other purpose than to be expressive. The Supreme Court has held that a work of art is specifically created by an artist can convey some message. One last point. Look at all the beautiful artworks you have in these cars up in your lobby. Look at all these talented artists you got here in Nevada. Can you imagine if you got the word out to all those young people that if they wanted to do artwork, fine art, they can sell it on public property whenever they want to without a license from anybody? Can you imagine the opportunities that would open up for so many people? For homeless people, for senior citizens, and for your young people and college students? Be incredible, and you'd also be bringing beauty to your community and helping a lot of people out in these times that are only going to get more stressful people.
Thank you, Mr. White.
Thank you for the service you guys give to your city. Get on you.
Deanne Radcliffe.
I'm just waiting for my PowerPoint. Hello, members of the city council. Thank you so much for your service and thanks for being here. I'm sure your day will be very dynamic. So my name is Deanne Radcliffe, and I am a resident. I am here to just share my lived experience with the Quilissee and Gold Ranch Fire. That, of course, happened in August of 2024. I listened to the joint fire meeting, and there was a huge focus on the Davis Fire, and this really wasn't discussed. So I wanted to come and share my lived experience. I just need to go forward pretty, please. It's only like seven slides. Okay. So many, oh, beautiful. Okay. So this was August 11th, 2024. I happened to see some smoke. I snapped a little picture. It was 6:29. Had no idea what was happening, other than we just saw smoke, so just to be aware. Is it perfect? Okay. So next came power off, pretty unquickly. And, you know, you lock up the house because you've got smoke coming in, right? It's pretty stinky and hot. Evacuation was super soon after. Didn't have a timeframe, didn't realize I was going to keep track of this. Reno police walked and drove my neighborhood and said it was time to evacuate. Never lived through anything like this at all. That's quite an endeavor, I'm going to tell you. If you haven't bought what you want to take, if you have animals, if you have children, wow, wow, and more wow. So it was 657 acres total in size. We can see that 80% of that acreage is the city of Reno. 20% is in Washoe County. Of course, it started over in I-80 with that vehicle fire. And again, 20% of the acreage total burned was Washoe County, 80% was city of Reno. And as you see on that map there, that's really all that area that is slated for development. And so, thank you to all fire personnel. This is magic. Anyway, thank you to all fire personnel, because obviously only one home was lost. Super sad for that family. I cannot imagine that. But thank you, thank you, thank you to fire personnel, because they did an amazing job. An amazing job. So this is just a little search in the Brady and 120 projects. Myself and many, many, many neighbors came to a multitude of meetings. There were six other meetings, too, hosted with developers, city Reno staff. We met ad nauseam, and fire safety was always talked about. One of the meetings, in fact, was city staff and residents. Chief Cochran was present at that meeting, and we talked about fire. My next slide really sort of says that. How was fire safety addressed? What changes to the TEDD maps were made in these several period of years and a multitude of meetings? And then answers none. There were no, no changes. The residents talked about how the fire was always going to come from the side that it did. It was going to do that. But no fire safety issues were addressed and TEDMAT changes were done. I watched the joint fire safety meeting, and I just took a couple quotes. Councilwoman Taylor has talked about this, about planning and preparing for things that we see as hazards, obviously, right? In this area. And then Mayor Shevy talked about investing in infrastructure or painting on the back end. And then Mayor Shevy also said it was not a matter of if, but when. And again, that already happened in 2024. Thankfully, nothing has really been built over in that section. So thank you very much for your time. It's appreciated.
Madam Vice Mayor, with that, we have no additional public comment.
Okay, well, close public comment and move on to item A4, approval of the agenda. Manager Bryant, do we have any updates?
We do not. Thank you.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. We need to open our DA meeting. Madam Clerk.
I will call roll for the Redevelopment Agency Board for Wednesday, March 5th. Vice Mayor Taylor.
Here.
Dour. Absent this time. Martinez.
Here.
Ebert.
Here.
Reese.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Shevy.
Here.
Madam Vice Mayor, you do have a quorum of the Redevelopment Agency Board.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment?
We do not have any public comment and don't have anyone, have not received any correspondence.
Fantastic. May we have approval? Do we have any changes to the agenda, Madam Manager?
We do not.
Looking for approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Great. We will move on to our finance items, which is item B1. Welcome.
So just for the record, we are opening item B1 on the Reno City Council agenda, as well as B1 on the redevelopment agency agenda.
And do we have any public comment on these items?
We do not have any public comment on either of these items.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning, Madam Vice Mayor and councilmembers. Vicki Van Buren, Director of Finance, for the record. And I am here today to present to you your first budget workshop for the fiscal year 26 budget. And I'm just going to wait until the presentation comes up to continue.
While he's loading that, I can go ahead and start if you want. Go ahead and start. Our first slide is generally the alignment with the strategic plan. On that slide, it aligns with all of the council priorities, because in short, the budget is the tool that turns strategic goals into reality. So by directing the funding toward achieving the desired outcomes, you are using the budget as the tool to do that. So it aligns with all of these strategic goals, and that's why we review that when we bring forward the budget every year. We want to review strategic goals and start with that every year, so that we can get, make sure that we align what resources we have based on the needs of the council. That's this one. If we move on to the next one, this is the agenda for today, so I just wanted to talk a little bit about that. We're going to include a review of the current general fund, current year, and then the baseline budget for next year. This is the starting point for the budget for next year, fiscal year 26. And then we're going to talk about special revenue funds, enterprise funds, and then internal service funds. And I've tried to break this up in a way that the workshops have different pieces of information and pull it all together. So today, you'll notice that we're not going to be talking about capital improvement projects so much. Those will be more focused on the May 5th meeting, but they are included as an attachment to the staff report that you got for you to review. And if you have questions today, feel free to ask those, and we can have staff come up and answer some of those questions on the more operational side. But more of the focus for capital will be next, the next meeting, because this is kind of the first build and the look at how everything looks, and then we'll move into kind of deeper stuff at the next one. I have, I'll turn it over to Lindsay after I follow with this piece, and she's going to start off the fee schedule overview, and then we're going to introduce Public Works, Parks, and Rec and Development Services, and they're going to go over some of their fees that are a little more complicated, not that have some more changes that are more than just CPI, to kind of explain those. So we'll go into that. And then I'll come back up and wrap up with what the next steps are and the timeline. So you'll notice that I'm trying to follow a pattern that we kind of did last year, because it worked really well. There's a little red triangle on the bottom of this slide, if you see it there. And so I've built this in a way that after each of these sections listed here, you'll see a red triangle, and it's about five to six slides, and it gives a good stopping point and a good breaking point normally between these talking points, and it really flowed well last year. I thought it worked well, so that's what we're going to shoot with again today, and hopefully it works just as well. So are there questions on how this is going to flow and what we're looking at for that?
I think we're good so far.
Okay, good. So here we are. This is last year, at the same workshop, council discussed their priorities, and this word "cloud" was developed from that meeting. So this is that meeting. So I often get questions on what do we need from you? We need all of your discussion and feedback, anything you want to talk about at this meeting, so that as we continue to build this budget, we know what the priorities are with the limited resources that we have. And that will give the guidance as we build things to work with the city manager and her team to figure out what we can potentially do in the space that we have. And so this is this workshop. Last year, the top four council priorities that were priorities across the board for all members included a public safety, code enforcement, parks, parks and rec, and infrastructure. So those were the top four, but this was kind of an idea of all of the things that were brought up last year. And we're going to be taking a lot of notes from everything you say, and we'll be bringing those back as we continue to talk and build this budget. So on April 9th, I'll be back with the third quarter augmentation. Lindsay will be doing that, but I'll be doing another financial update. And then we'll have lots of other meetings in between. We'll still have council briefings, and then the next official workshop will be on May 5th. But we will have a lot of talking in between that as well. And so that's, this is really how we build what your priorities are as we move forward. I don't think my clicker is working. Okay. Did it work? Oh, there it went. Okay. Was delayed there for a second. So we're going to talk about the current year, because we can't build next year until we know where we're going to end in the current year. So looking at the current year, this was the adopted budget, as council adopted it last year, plus the $8 million in the one-time funds, because those were funds that were identified from the prior year savings that were used to cover the cost increases of the collective bargaining agreements that came forward after budget adoption. So really, this is the adopted budget plus that $8 million. It's really critical here that we realize that we are using prior year funds to fund the current year budget. So that's a gap that we're going to have to manage as we move forward, even in tough times. We're already in a situation of using one-time funds for current year operations. And that will create a problem as we move forward, as you'll see, without more revenue growth or less expenses, because those are the only two ways to really bridge that gap. So you can do a combination of that, but really those are our only options to bridge that gap. And so that's really the reason I wanted to bring up this slide, and then also to kind of talk about, again, consolidated taxes, which are mostly sales taxes and then property tax. Those are our biggest revenue sources. Without growth in those areas, really the other areas don't grow that much, anywhere from 1% to 2%, 3% growth between all of the other areas that you see on that pie chart for revenues. So the only really big growth that we really see is in that, those other two areas. And right now, those, one area is doing well, property tax, but one is not. And so we'll see that as we move forward. And then salary and benefits here, I want to highlight that it's 76% of the total budget as far as expenditures. And when we move forward, you'll see some changes in that based on the resources that we have in the increasing in the compounding costs going on there. So that will be increasing, as you'll see, as we move forward. So current year, in current year revenues, we have, property taxes are coming in about 1%, 1.5% above budget. That's been typical over the last few years, and the average increase is around 8% a year growth for property tax. C-tax has really been very flat over the last three years. We haven't seen much growth since the really big boom that we saw with the COVID and that extra money that we got during that time. We haven't seen a lot of growth since then, so we're in year three of very limited growth on C-tax. C-tax is currently running about 5% below budget, because we did anticipate for it to grow like it normally would have. Franchise fees are, franchise fees are below budget. They are actually trending year over year a little bit less. Last year was less than the prior year, and they're really based on consumption and usage. Very similar to C-tax, they're going to react immediately to things in the economy. So as people need more money to spend on groceries, they may dial back in other areas, such as, you know, electricity and other areas that they can dial back those costs. So we're really starting to see that. As we build the budget forward, we're anticipating that's probably going to continue based on what we're seeing with the economy. It's our best estimate at this point. Licenses and permits, that includes your business licenses. We are seeing a little decline there as well. Again, this is economy-based, because a lot of those licenses and permits are based on gross receipts. So if gross receipts are down for businesses, then the payments in are, you know, down as well. Normal growth is around 3% a year in that space. So again, not large growth that we see in those areas. Charge for service is a little higher here, because we have the fire strike team reimbursements that come in, and so we don't budget for those. As they come in, we augment the budget and then obviously the expenditures that relate to those. So overall, we're looking at, and we're looking at a budget deficit of around $9 million in revenues for the current year. And so what that is really, the biggest places where that is, is between consolidated tax and franchise fees. Really, those two are really creating this budget deficit around the $9 million for the revenues. How are we going to? Not working. Next slide, please. Thank you. How are we going to bridge that gap? So in general fund expenses, this was identified very early on, because we built this budget that we're currently in same time last year. So you build it much in advance of when the year actually starts. And so a lot of the things that we anticipated happening with changes in interest rates and the economy is going to bounce back, and a lot of the things that the talk of coming out of that really flat time period following COVID, thought that changing the interest rates as we came out of the inflation would reduce inflation, we would change interest rates at the federal level, and things are going to start to come back to a normal pace. Well, what we've actually seen is that inflation has been very, it's been very strong, and it's gone on longer than what they thought. It's taken a lot longer to get down to a level. We're still not down to the 2% level where the feds would like it, and so they've held off on interest rate changes. Interest rate changes were anticipated to start last year around May and June, and that's what we anticipated when we did the budget, thinking that it's going to boost the economy a little bit, boost housing, and it has impact across the whole economy. What actually happened, though, is interest rates didn't start to be adjusted until September. And so they did a few adjustments in September, and now, we've started this year, they're saying, well, they're not, they're not eager to do anymore right now. So we're in kind of a holding pattern. So flat is really what we're looking at for growth. And that's not what was anticipated this time last year when we were building the budget, just to kind of give you an idea of that. So early on, as this budget year actually started, in August and September, we realized that, you know what? This budget, we're not going to have the revenue growth that we thought we were going to have. And so, working with the city manager and her team, we talked about what can we do to draw back on expenditures? The city manager asked departments, you know, to find savings of 2% in the current year, and then also slow rolling and holding some positions as they become vacant. And really what that's done is create expenditure savings in the current year. We are not really seeing savings in salary and wages, and that's because when people leave, we still owe them payouts in severance, their vacation time and such. So when those payouts hit, that's really offsetting that salary savings we would have, but we would still have benefit savings. So the real savings we're seeing in the current year, about $4 million, is from the benefit side of vacant positions. That's in retirement costs, Medicare, and then also health insurance from that vacant position. So the savings that we have is really from benefits. And then in services and supplies, having departments really, you know, tighten their belts and work in that space, another $4 million there. So between that, we're anticipating a savings of about $8.5 million in, as far as compared to budget in expenditures. So when you look at this rolled up, so you look at where we think we're going to end the year, we're going to be $9 million short in revenues, that deficit, but we're going to have savings in the expenditure side of it. So that difference is really this net that you see at the bottom, around $400,000. That's going to be plus or minus a half million either way. I believe this year, we're going to, we're going to come out very even, because it was recognized so early in the year that economies changed and things have changed since we built this budget. So this year is not really an issue as, as we're working through this year, but when we build for next year, we build it based on current staffing, and that's really what the baseline we have. Build it on current staffing and current services that the city is providing. And that is going to be impacted based on where we know the revenues are trending right now as we move forward. So when we move into next year's budget, oh, sorry, I think I had to stop there. I didn't stop myself. So I wanted to stop there and see if there are questions on the current year.
Councilmembers, Councilmember Reese?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Ms. Van Buren, first of all, thank you for the presentation so far and for the presentations that we've received on the ongoing issues. I think for my part, because there isn't a lot of public here, I want to make sure that I'm clear on a couple of things. The first is, is that your office works very diligently with our respective offices to keep us apprised of the financial situation as it unfolds. Is that fair?
Yes, that is correct.
And so we have budget meetings and updates and briefings on the status of our budget. How many times a week would you say those? I mean, or maybe a month?
We've, we've been doing monthly updates since December, because we recognized early on that this is not a typical year, and so we're seeing some things that are not normal for us, and we're trying to figure. And they're not just not normal for us, it's the whole region. Where Sparks, Washoe County- We're Sparks, Washoe County, the school district, we're all seeing challenges in the revenue space. So this is not, this is not something that is mismanagement of any way. It is just a change in the revenues beyond what is considered normal. And so we have to adjust to that.
And let me maybe drill down on that point. I appreciate your thoughts. I suppose I look at our partners, Sparks, Washoe County, the school district, us, all sort of saying the same things. I look down south and see a number of municipalities, again, saying the same thing. And so when I hear people in the community, or they send emails to me that say, hey, we think you've, like, mismanaged the city, and I have to explain to them, here's how we got to where we are, then they're pretty quick to say, okay, now we get it. So for my part, I am worried that, as much as the financial explanation that you can give is explained by these graphs and pictures and the numbers, what I hope that people understand, too, is that we take very seriously the charge to be good stewards of the resources of our community, and that we aren't in a different boat than any of the other entities that are in the state and region. Because of Nevada's property tax system, which depreciates property over time and does not reset, we are constantly chasing an increase in costs. Wage, salaries, benefits always go up, they don't go down, and a declining revenue stream. So in order to, for that model to flip the other way, you have to have some measure of growth, right? And so that's what I took from your first series of slides, and I suppose I hope that I have not missed it, but given what you said here and your explanation of fiscal year '25, it's better than I thought it was going to be for fiscal '25. So that means you're doing the hard work. And then I'm, of course, interested in the bigger cliff, which is next year.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Are there council members? Do we have anybody?
Yes.
Oh, Randy. I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, go ahead.
Yeah, and just real quick, too, before we start, like, I don't know how you want me to let you know that I want to comment. Should I raise the hand digitally, or should I just chime in?
If you raise it digitally, I should be able to see it. So right now, I see Councilmember Anderson's hand up.
Okay, thank you. So, Ms. Van Buren, thank you so much for the presentation. I know this has been a lot of work, so thank you for that. I do have a couple of questions. One of your last statements was that our expenses haven't really gone up. Did I hear that correctly?
Our expenditures are under budget because of the cost-saving measures that we've undertaken for this current year, knowing the situation.
Okay. So I'm a little confused as to how we can say that, but then also say that we have this deficit. So what is the trigger for this deficit?
So as we build the budget, thank you for the question, because that is a little confusing sometimes. As we build the budget, we build next year's budget based on current staffing levels. So we assume that every position is going to be filled when we build the budget, and we base it on current service levels as well. So currently, as we exist today, we're going to build next year's budget, and we're going to include any increases in COLAs, step increases, PERS increases. Any of those increases that we know that impact salary and benefits that we are obligated to, we build that in. And then we build in the services and supplies. In general, they remain very flat. We don't increase those for the most part unless it's an additional funding request. So that's what we consider the baseline budget. At that point, we roll it up, and then we bring it forward to you as council to see where are we at at that point. And at that point, if we have more in revenues, you can look to add, or if it's not keeping pace, which is what we're going to see this year, then there are choices that have to be made. So maybe positions that we're currently holding vacant to create some of the savings gap in this year may have to continue into next year. And those are the discussions we really need to have today. Does that answer your question?
Yes, and I'm not sure if I have any time remaining.
You have 30 seconds.
Okay. So my other question is, I guess it's kind of a statement and a question. I hear frequently that City of Reno has not brought their number of police and fire up to pre-2008 numbers. And it's my understanding that we have many more homes, apartments, businesses, buildings of any kind, businesses, and property values are up way above what they were in 2007. So I know that our tax structure depreciates, but how can we get an analysis of how we were able to afford that number of police and fire prior to 2008, and see what expenses we have now that we didn't have then? Because I'm just curious to see, you know, how, with less money, we were able to have more first responders, basically. So that's it. Thank you.
Sure. And I'd like to respond to that, because that does come up quite often, and we do know that, yes, that is correct. We do have less now than we had then in the police officer space. We have done that analysis. One of the things that we will talk about as we go on further is the compounding effect of revenue loss. And so we talk about the compounding effect of expenditures as we continue forward, but that compounding effect of revenue loss is the other side of this equation. And we have the two things going on at the same time as we move forward. Back during the recession, when the number of officers and other positions as well during that time, when those were reduced, it took nine years from that point to get back to the same amount of property tax that we had at that point, where everyone wants to say, oh, yes, this is how much money we had, and we had these many officers. It, once the recession hit and that income declined, it declined in such a way, it took nine years to get back to the same level, nine years, in both spaces. And they were different, because the first one to cut off is sales tax, which is consolidated tax. That one comes off immediately. So once that one starts to climb back, at that point, two years in, takes a two-year lag before property tax, you'll see the hit. So then property tax hits, starting to climb back for C-tax, but property tax hits in two years. So nine years from the point, the start for sales tax and consolidated tax to come back, and then two years later, another nine years before property tax comes back. And so as we talk through some of these slides later, I urge you to think about the compounding effect of all of that loss. So, once we even get back to where we were, we haven't even grown. We're just getting back to where we were, and now we're nine, 10 years later, and everything costs much more 10 years later. So we're not going to be able to afford, even with the same dollars, what we had 10 years earlier. Does that kind of help to explain some of that, I hope?
Yes. Thank you. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes, thank you. One of the things that I wanted to just explore a little farther here is the franchise fees. One of the first memories I have from learning about our finances with the city was at the FAB, the first time that I attended, and learning about franchise fees. And you said something in that meeting that I was hoping you could explore a little bit here, and it was that this is the first period that you've been with the City of Reno where you have seen declining franchise fees. And why that is alarming to me is that is behavior change. That is utilization of utility behavior change that is going to be very difficult to undo as it relates to predictive ability to budget. So can you talk a little bit about that and what our strategy is there?
Yes, and thank you for that, too, because it's, normally, it does trend up 2% to 3% a year, franchise fees, because it will follow your population. So if population's going up 2% to 3%, you have new people moving to the area, new houses. So it tends to really follow that. And we're now seeing that last year, it actually declined year over year, and we're seeing a very similar decline this, well, not, it's very flat this year, but it declined year over year last year. And so I think that is indicative of people dialing back in that space. The other piece of it is the climate. So if we have really cold winters, then we do see more, because there's more usage during that time, and the last couple of years have been very mild as well. And so there's a lot of fluctuation between the weather and usage, so it fluctuates in a space where I haven't really seen that before. Normally, sales tax fluctuates, but normally, franchise fees seems pretty steady. But we are seeing that differentiate there, and I think part of that is people's budgets, their own budgets at home are being pinched, and so they're finding ways to change their usage as well. I know I have done it personally, so I know that.
Thank you. I guess I have a quick question, too, and I asked this in my briefing, and I know we all take our briefings very seriously and do a lot of preparation and a lot of work for them, so this might be repetitive, but I think you and your team are phenomenal, and part of what you have to do is you have to predict the future with information that you have. And during my time here, you've been extraordinarily, exceptionally great in being able to do that. And I'm wondering, you said something very telling to me, have we ever really seen this sort of trend before? And the news that I got, or the way I understood it, it was very extraordinary of what's going on with our economy. So being able to predict this hasn't been something that is a lack on your part or your team or anything. It's just, if you could just talk a little bit about how extraordinary this is.
Sure. And I have some slides later that really kind of explain our thought processes as we built the budget. But, you know, in general, we haven't seen this before, because really, what happens when we see periods of high inflation, the feds raise the interest rates, we go into recession, it pulls things back, it changes the dynamics of the economy by the things that the feds do. And so what we end up seeing is we see a recession normally, and we were kind of headed that route after the high inflation. We were heading toward that recessionary-type period, and what the feds did was pull a lot of levers on interest rates and do a lot of things. Well, this is the first time they've ever, in the history, gotten what they've called a soft landing. And so from the soft landing, that really just means that we're not falling off the cliff going into a recession, but what does that really mean long-term? Does that mean we are flat for a couple of years, five years? Is it going to decline even a little bit more before it starts growing? We don't have a history on that. So we're all kind of navigating that together. We may be not in a recession, which is great, but not having revenue growth is still a problem. So we're not falling off a cliff, but now we're having to manage within a space that we're unsure of how long it's going to last, if that...
No, that helps a lot. So, and I think we're seeing that, as Councilmember Reese said, all over these local governments. So it's not just the City of Reno, it's happening everywhere, was something that we've never experienced before.
Absolutely, and we don't have data on it.
We don't have data.
Madam Mayor, I see your hand raised.
All right, thank you so much. Thank you, Vicki, I really appreciate it. I think you are just absolutely top-notch. I always have, and appreciate everything that you bring to the table. Let me ask you a couple of things, because I don't remember, and this is not anything, you know, that I think that you have, you know, done or responsibility for in any way. And not to mention, I think, we don't talk enough about the tax structure, that the only state in the country that has this formulation is Nevada, right? So we never talk about that and how challenging it is, and the tax caps, and it seems like every government in Nevada, whether it's the state or counties, rob Peter to pay Paul basically half the time, because you're trying to move within this very, very rigid box. I do want to say, because it shows where most of our finances go is on the staffing side, correct? I think you said 76?
Yes, that is correct.
Yes. Okay. So with that being said, and I can't remember ever doing one, but I wonder the possibility of an outside audit of looking at, you know, where they can sort of be independent, because I will say that departments get very territorial about, you know, staffing and things that they put their budgets towards, and I get that. I think that's their job, to be territorial and protect, you know, exactly what they're trying to accomplish. I would like to know if we've ever looked at bringing in outside audit firm, because if we do eventually down the road have to make cuts, you know, what does that look like? Because I will tell you this, I feel like in the last four or five years, we have tried to ramp up staffing. And the other thing that's really challenging that we haven't talked about, we never got back to the levels that I believe that they cut in 2007, when I looked through these financials. And then the other thing, I think Ms. Anderson brought this up, is, you know, staffing levels with fire and police. And here's what I would say, it's always been super critical and important to make sure that your public safety is top-notch, because I think that's one area where we want to continue to build back. But it's hard when people retire, or, you know, there's just other factors that go into that, mainly retirement, we see that, so it becomes sort of like this wheel. But, so, just getting back to a question, looking at possibly an outside audit of where we can get really, really lean. And then the other thing I would say is that, for me, I have, and I think, I couldn't, I can't remember speaking for everyone else, but I know it's been important to the council to make sure that, you know, public safety is always at however we can possibly grow it or keep it at capacity. It's got to be a priority.
Yes. A lot of your information there, you're spot-on with levels. I just talked about that, as far as getting back to levels in police and what the challenges are there and why that occurred. A lot of the other things you talked about seem to be more operational, and so I think, Manager Bryant, I don't know if you wanted to comment on maybe some of the operational pieces of it, because financially, I don't have an answer for that at this point.
Yes, I think some of the questions will be answered as you get through the presentation a bit more.
Councilmember Ebert?
I guess I'm just saying, as we go down this road and things get a little rocky, I know, you know, everyone's talking about it, saying the landscape, I just want everyone to be aware that this council is going to have to sharpen their pencils, and if we go down that road, it would be good to have an outside, independent audit of what that looks like, if we're having to make, you know, adjustments in the largest areas of where we're spending. So I would, that's just something that I would suggest.
Councilmember Ebert, do you have your hand raised?
Yes, I do, thank you. I did have another question, and that was regarding the franchise fees. Councilmember Anderson brought this up. Can you please explain what, where those franchise fees come from? What franchises are they?
Sure, we get a 5% of the gross receipts of electric, gas, and then telephone. We also receive cable TV franchise fees, and we actually incur the sewer franchise fees. We charge, we run the sewer system, but then we charge a 5% franchise fee on that as well to be consistent with all of the others. So from all of those spaces, and it's based on usage on the actual gross receipts.
Okay. So is it fair to say that these are not luxury items, right? Like, this is, these are necessities that people need to maintain a home, products like sewer, electricity, presumably, management, things of that nature. These are not, like, taking trips to, you know, taking vacations. Is it fair to say that these are people cutting back on just basic living expenses?
Yes, and in that space, we do see people cutting back on telephone, even though we receive a franchise fee on cell phones, it's a little different. So when people turn off their landlines, we have seen that decline year over year for many years, as people get rid of landline telephones and they rely just on cell phones. We've also seen a decrease significantly in cable TV franchise fees, because people are switching to streaming services, and we do not get franchise fees on streaming services. So that, in that space, has declined year over year for many years, too.
Okay. So that is particularly concerning to me, because that tells me that people have reached their limit. If they're willing to cut back on basic necessities or finding cheaper alternatives to things that we consider just regular household expenses, that's very concerning to me for the overall economy. I don't think that raising any kind of franchise fees could be... I don't think that raising any kind of franchise fees could be tolerated well by constituents, just based off of the trend that I'm seeing. So do you have any thoughts on that, on how we could increase revenue streams without increasing franchise fees?
Well, we're limited on what we can charge for franchise fees. We're limited to that 5%, because that is a statutory limit. So we are, you know, at the mercy of the usage on that, again, just like we are at sales tax. So there are things that are just variables that we cannot control. One of the things we can do is really be mindful when we build these budgets, to build it to our best ability and what we think, without trying to stretch it.
Thank you. Okay. We're going to go to Councilmember Reese, and then we're going to let you move on with your presentation.
Ms. Van Buren, is there a moment in the presentation where we'll be specifically talking about our public safety budget and numbers in that area? Because I don't want to get ahead of the budget, but of course, the mayor has hit the nail on the head. Our most critical function as a city is our public safety function. And so every budget that I've been here for, and that's now seven, we have prioritized making sure we had increase in staffing in those areas. We've certainly done that both on the police and fire side. And of course, against that backdrop is retirements. So every time you hire four new police officers and four or six retire, you're still chasing something. But is there a place in the presentation coming up where we're going to have this spot to talk?
Yes, absolutely.
Then I'll defer to that time.
So I'm going to move on to the next slide here. So talking about 26, so that was 25. So whereas we're building for 26, again, this is the baseline budget. So we take all the staffing levels as they currently are. We assume that every position is going to be filled as it is, because that's, that's the starting point for the budget. We build it based on all the COLAs, CBAs, any of adjustments that we know are coming. PERS is really critical in this year, because there was a large increase there. So we build all of that in. And then for operating costs, we reach out to departments. Departments provide their input on their supplies and such. For the last few years, we have told them you have to work in the space that you have. So they don't put in for budgets for their operating supplies that exceeds what they got the prior year. They would have to put in an additional funding request. And you do have your additional funding requests where an attachment to the staff report. Those are all the things that departments would like to have, or would, they would need to have for their department if they're going to change services or to do their services better that they currently do. Or even in some cases, you know, we ask them to put in, what would you need to run your department the best that you can do to cover the services as we're currently committed? And so they, they put those in every year, and there's always lots more wants or needs than we can actually afford. But we go ahead and gather that, so that you have that as counsel to see, what are the needs that are out there, and how are we going to bridge those as best we can as we move along? We want to make sure that departments have that opportunity to let us know what it really takes to do everything exactly as they should be doing it in a perfect world. And we know that's not necessarily the resources we have to match that. So those additional funding requests are attached. We're not really going to talk about those a lot today. They're for you, for you to look at and go through. And then if you see things on there, you can ask questions of the departments operationally on those, and then give guidance on it. But I don't have a separate presentation on those at that, this point today. We would bring those back at the next meeting, if that's something that we're going to go into. Revenue forecast...
This is Naomi. Before you go on, just a really quick question. Is that okay?
Actually, we're going to go through the presentation. You missed the first part of it, and then she has stopping points.
No. It was about the answer she just gave. I just wanted to understand.
Okay, but can you hold it and wait until we get to the point where we're going to stop, please? Thank you.
Well, I would like to ask my question, because I'm sure I'm going to forget if you went mine. It's very quick, just clarification. When you said, "We assume all the positions are filled," would we come up with a freeze or something later? But today, you haven't incorporated that. Is that correct?
That is correct, as the build out for next year.
All right. Thank you.
And then we build the revenues piece of it. So we build all the expenses as we know they currently exist, and then we build the revenue piece based on what we know of the economy. And we match those up. And this is the baseline, the first look at the budget as we bring forward here, overview to let you know. These, this is where we're at, knowing everything we know, and these are all the things that departments need or would like to have to do these things better. C-tax that we built out for the current year is flat. And so for next year, what we're seeing is growth about 2%. And that's really coming through the state. That's what they think their projection is for next year. We're seeing exactly 0% right now, based on the limited information that we have on C-tax right now. The state did switch their software system, so the last full month of consolidated tax I have is October. We got half of November approximately. And then we got another month that looks like about a month of payment. Not sure if it's half of November and half of December, or all of December, but there's limited information as to what time period it's for. We are still receiving money, but without the corresponding communication on what time period it's for, it's hard for us to gauge really where it's landing. Based on, we've kind of put our heads together between other jurisdictions, and we figured out, looking at what they've gotten and what we've gotten, and kind of comparing across the board, it looks like it's still trending very flat, even if it's part of this and part of that, and doing some different scenarios. What they're telling us now is they will do a true-up in March. If they do a true-up and bring everything current in March, we will have through January, because it runs two months, the delay on it is two months behind. So if March is correct, and we get that true-up, at the end of this month, we will have some better information. But right now, I think the best information we have is 0% growth for the current year. Property tax is doing really well. Again, it's trending at 1.5% above budget. And I projected it at about 7.7%. It's trending around 8%. That one varies a little bit based on new development in the area. We won't have the final numbers for property tax until March 25th. So that number, I suspect, will be a little bit higher, but we don't know, because the new development piece of that is really the unknown piece until they issue their final numbers. But for purposes of this build, I've gone with 7.7%. Total budget, when you look at building out all the funds, we've breached that billion-dollar mark. The last few years, we've been around $950, $980 million. Well, this year, we've breached the million, the billion-dollar mark. So a $1 billion budget between all the funds. This does include, when we look at this, these big overview slides, it includes the total resources available. And total resources available means all the expenditures that have been budgeted and the ending fund balance. So you will see some differences between this slide and some of the later slides that we talk about, because this slide does include your ending fund balances. This is everything that exists on the books. General Fund is the largest, $362 million. That fund is the hardest one for us to balance, and that's why we spend so much time on it. One, because it's the largest, and it is the harder one for us to balance and prioritize all the different needs between the various departments. The other funds have dedicated funds to them, and so those funds are for specific purposes. And so easier to balance, because it's specific purposes and not, you know, competing against various different needs, because they are already individualized for those needs. And the enterprise fund, you'll see that line, that we have the two enterprises. We have the building fund and then the sewer fund in that space. So those two funds comprise the enterprise funds there. And then also included on here is RDA as part of our total budget. When you look at full-time positions, there are currently a little over 1,500 full-time positions within the city. These are across all funds. And then if you look at just the general fund, about 1,200 positions in the general fund. 69% of those are considered technically public safety, and that just means public safety departments. So it includes the whole Department of Police, Fire, and Dispatch to run those departments. And if you kind of look at those numbers, you start to think, well, that's two out of every three positions are really in those departments. We have 1,200 in the general fund, and 848 of those are technically public safety departments. That's two out of every three positions. Really, they don't exist in a vacuum, because all of these other departments, in some way or shape or form, really contribute to assist with that as well. But I think that the main takeaway I have from this slide is just that there's really not a lot of space when you start to look to make cuts, or pull back, or draw back as we start to see flattening revenues. There's just not, there's not a lot of space to go for things. So that's, that was kind of my point for this slide, was just to, to give you an idea of where all of those resources are. When you look at positions on a doughnut, I like to show it in a separate way to you, so that sometimes people visually can see it better than they can see it in a chart. And again, the little gold bar pulled out, that's just showing you public safety, which is the three bars, the blue, the red, and the gray together. That's 848 positions. But again, general government, like finance, city manager's office, HR, IT, all of these support all of these departments, too. So no one exists in a vacuum. So I'm not trying to single anyone out here. I'm just trying to explain that some departments, although large, other departments still work in conjunction with these departments and across boundaries. We wanted to include this. I have never personally done this slide, as we've gone through these workshops before. But I thought it was really important to put this up, to let you know where we are as a government. So, city of Reno is the lowest on here, at 5.3 employees per 1,000 residents, because sometimes people think, well, we have too many people, we have too many people, and we need to cut back. Well, we're doing the best we can with what we have, and I think this chart really shows the impact of that, that we've leveraged technology, we've changed some of the services around, we've really worked in spaces that we can, with the resources that we have, to provide the best that we can for the community. And even doing that, we still only have the 5.3 employees per resident, per 1,000 residents. And so sometimes it's talked about in that space, and I think this really kind of shows that we're doing the maximum we can with the resources we have. Additional funding requests, I talked about this a little bit. These are all the additional things. So outside of what is in the current budget build, these are the things that departments think would make their departments better, run better, maybe even be a different service or an extra service. But this is really the ideal. If we could have things that we needed to do everything perfectly, these are the things we would need. It can also include special projects, if there are special projects, too. So you'll see RDA on here, $5.4 million. Included in this additional funding request are some things to look at for plan updates, new positions to work in that space, because that is a space that's growing, RDA. And so any of those type of requests that want to expand services would be in this space as well. So you're looking at $32 million approximately of additional funding requests that departments have put in. These would be either additions that would be nice to have to fulfill exactly what we're supposed to be doing, or they might be new services, like in this space in RDA. When you look at it by department, you'll see that list here. So this just kind of breaks it out, so you see where most of the requests are coming from. So you'll see a lot of, a big space on the right-hand side for the RDA number in that request space. And then Parks and Rec, Police, Maintenance and Operations, there's a lot of deferred maintenance out there. So they put in those items so that we know they're on the radar. If we don't know they exist, we can't really address them. We may not have funds now, but we still need to do our due diligence to make sure that we're aware of everything that's out there, and that's really what this means. So this is another stopping point.
Councilmember Reese?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Ms. Van Buren, a couple of things about this batch of slides. Can we first, let's start with the last one, I suppose. The revenue requests, I think you've characterized these as the magic ask if we had no limitations on our budget. So my guess is, is all of these are probably not going very far in a down budget. But let me ask very specifically about Maintenance and Operations. We talk a lot about public safety being police, fire, dispatch. I also include our Maintenance Operations people in public safety, because the work that they do is truly in that space. It can be snow removal, it can be, you know, fixing a burst water main, it can be a lot of things. These folks, I think, work very hard. Why such a large number there? What are we doing that we've ignored them? Is that really what's happened? It's been a collective years of under support?
I don't think so. I think they have a lot of equipment needs in there as well, because they would ask for additional snow plows and things. So you're going to see some large dollar amounts in some of those spaces for equipment needs and such. So that's part of that.
Let me ask about the RDA ask. And so the earlier slide said there's going to be like $41 million in the budget for it. It's got some asks. It's new space for us, and I know we'll be talking specifically about it. Is there, and maybe this is something for our legal counsel, but you described it as specific and identifiable funds, meaning funds in that bucket can only be spent on certain things, right? They cannot be used to cover budget shortfalls in the general fund. What is the benefit of redevelopment agency if the rest of the city, and not that this is happening, but if it collapsed, right? If you're sitting on a bunch of money in the redevelopment agency, but the city is not healthy, this is an odd thing for me. And so I want to understand the limitations of what those funds could be used to cover. Perhaps it's also related to my concerns that maybe there are police services that happen very specifically within our redevelopment agency geographically that could be shifted there. Is there any, is there wiggle room, is what I'm saying?
Thank you, Councilmember Reese, Ashley Attorney, Assistant City Manager, for the record. If I understand the question, you are asking about eligibility of RDA funds to be able to use to help fill spaces, as well as what some of these asks are?
Well, it's more like the RDA covers a geographic area, and within that geographic area, we certainly have, in some ways, more police services, I think, for example. And so where we do things like in the building fund, we pay for certain employees, because they're adjacent and related to the services in that fund. I'm just wondering what the RDA can do, if anything, beyond the asks that are identified in the budget?
So to clarify, there's a few things. We use the term RDA interchangeably as the increment that's coming off. But the RDA, in its essence, is an agency. It is a standalone entity, separate from the Reno City Council. However, you wear a separate hat when you're showing up in that space. Within the RDA, there are two areas that contribute tax increment, financing, the TIF, this is the difference of the money that comes in from property tax. The areas are defined by statute within the legislative process. So just creating that distinction. Now, within that, the increment that's thrown off in those areas has a very specific utilization based off of the NRS. It has to be utilized for redevelopment, very, very specific ties. Cannot be used for maintenance, cannot be used for the other staffing entity issues. Really, the monies have to be used for redevelopment or agency staff. And so in your particular scenario, while there may be a higher call for service, there may be additional resources from first responders, those are not eligible expenses for the RDA funds.
What if like a lift station for a sewer was in the RDA, and we couldn't develop said piece of property without improvements to it? Is that adjacent enough?
The distinction would be, is the lift station, are we not able to accommodate the redevelopment, because the lift station has had deferred maintenance, and so it is a maintenance issue? RDA is not eligible. Is a development not possible, because there's an infrastructure opportunity that the city could put in? Yes, RDA could be used. We oftentimes use the example of sewer lines that need to be moved, something that the city has an obligation, but for us, taking care of that infrastructure change, that land cannot be developed. So that would be something that the RDA could step in and use that to help. However, it's important that I state on the record that we cannot supplant general fund by using RDA funds.
Makes sense. Thank you so much. I'll have a second round, perhaps.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes, just a quick question for you, Vicky. On the slide that you showed, and I know we're still getting information from the state about property taxes and C-tax, I'm just asking, if we are seeing flat growth in C-tax, why would the state encourage 2%? I'm just wondering, from a budgeting perspective, why would we budget, why wouldn't we budget flat?
Well, good question. We're seeing 0% for the current year, and they're anticipating 2% for next year. Normal growth, as we get into some other slides, is around 4% a year, because really what you're... what you're going to see is inflation, the impact of inflation. So as things cost more, then people have to pay more and we get more sales tax. So as inflation increases, and then as population increases. So generally, 4% is your general average growth, and that's 2% inflation and 2% growth in population. But we're not seeing that. So really, based on what they're thinking is, you know, we're going to start to ease back to the, start going back to normal because we're in that flat phase. Whether flat is going to continue longer, that's the space that's really tricky.
So it's beneficial, I'm understanding that it would be beneficial to budget at 2% because the state gives us the ability to do that with their projections, and then we can make adjustments along the way in '26 when, as you did in December, you bring it back to us and say, it's looking as if we're going to be closer to flat, and then we can make adjustments on the fly.
Absolutely. I think 2% is, you know, it's still very conservative.
But it gives us some wiggle room. Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Martinez?
Thanks so much, Madam Vice Mayor, and thanks Director Van Buren for the presentation so far. I think I want to go and explore Slide 13, if we could, for a little bit. I think a lot of the examples that you gave are within the state and may be experiencing similar situations that we are in the City of Reno, but curious what sort of infrastructure and the way that Carson City is set up to be able to, you know, have that ratio as opposed to the City of Reno or Washoe County, if you have any insight on that, and if there's anything we can glean from that and learn and improve what we're doing here.
I do not. I don't know if Manager Bryant has some additional information on that. I do not, I'm not familiar with their structure, so I don't know.
Yeah, so as Vicky stated, this is a relatively new data point for us. We saw someone else do it and wanted to explore for ourselves, just to see whether our staffing ratios were, on average, high or low. As you can see, they're relatively low. One of the thoughts might be is that Carson City is the state capital, and so they have more revenues, maybe. We're not sure why or how they are able to hold on to these staffing ratios, but we do know that they're also having some of the same challenges that everyone in the Washoe County is experiencing, and so we'll see what this looks like next year.
Okay. I appreciate the info. Just wanted to see if we could explore that a little bit more and see if there are any ways that we can improve the situation that we're living through and any things that we can learn from there. The other question that I had, and it's sort of to expand on what Councilmember Reese had mentioned, I know in the past year, this fiscal year, we have augmented some positions and looked at reallocating where they are being paid out of and seeing if there are any other positions, not just that are being asked for and the department asks, but current positions that we have filled that could be moved into different fund sources, and seeing if that has been explored already.
Yes, we have gone through a full process of that this year, and Manager Bryant has really led that with her team as far as looking at every single position in every department and justifying what work they're doing and which funds it's related to. And all of that has been reflected in this build as we build it forward.
Okay, thank you.
Vicky, I wanted to just make a clarifying point, that just because C-Tax is definitely trending down, just because we have not received it, doesn't mean that it's waiting someplace and we're going to get a big check someplace in March. That was one of the questions that we got at the legislature, where people thought, oh, not being paid isn't the same as revenues going down. The revenues are definitely going down in the C-Tax, from what we can see.
Yes, revenues are trending flat, from what we can tell. We are short a half of a month, because they only gave us half of one month. So that is part of the true-up, and how much some of the other areas they need to adjust a little bit, because they're not telling us how, what range they're giving us money for, so.
Sure. So, and also when you say property tax is trending up a little bit and C-Tax is propping down, it's not, they're not equalling out to the point where we can have C-Tax decline what it's doing and still make up for it on property tax?
Yes, that's correct.
And then the other thing I wanted to look at is on Slide 11, I think this will become more important as we move through, move through your presentation. I mean, this is saying, we have approximately 1,500 employees. 1,200 of those employees are coming out of the general fund. 850 of those are public safety. So when we say that we are prioritizing public safety, this council has, for years, been trying to prioritize public safety, but it's coming out of a fund that isn't generating the money needed to keep it growing. So that's what I see when I look at this. Councilmember Ebert, I see your hand, and then Councilmember Doer.
Sorry, technical difficulties. Yeah, so I have a question. It was kind of in line with what Manager Bryant had to say about those comparisons with different regions. Is it possible to have, like, meetings with them, to collaborate, to find out, like, how others are handling these budget issues? Maybe we can all kind of benefit from, you know, sharing our knowledge and what's happening? Is that something that's possible?
Thank you for the question. Yes, we are doing that on lots of different levels. From the finance level, I know that I am collaborating with Sparks in Washoe County very often, and even the school district, very often, we reach out, we talk to each other. We're having monthly meetings with Sparks that I'm involved in. I know the manager's office has meetings that are set up regularly now, working with all of these agencies too. And it's not just this time period. We've kind of, we kind of always do this, but we're doing it even more now, because we're all trying to find solutions to these issues.
Great. So I have another question about franchise fees, and I'm sorry, this is not the right time, but I just don't want to forget. Is it possible to renegotiate franchise fees on cell phones and look for ways to have franchise fees on streaming services?
I think that the answer to the question, as it currently is no, because it's statutorily set at the 5% max. So that's, that franchise fee that we're charging on the gross receipts, it's at the 5% max, so we don't have a space without a change, you know?
Is 5% a max on cell phones?
Cell phones are a little different, because cell phones, I believe, are $5 per cellphone, which is a little different than what we get for the franchise fee for a landline.
Yeah, that's, that's the piece that I'm asking about. I don't know if it would generate more revenue to renegotiate that. Is that possible?
It's certainly a space that, you know, I can, we can put on our list to look at.
Okay.
If I may, Your Honor, yeah, we can't renegotiate that. They're not franchises, that's dictated. And then, just from a legal standpoint, for the record, John Shipman, like the video streaming services, I don't know if this council recalls, we did have a lawsuit, and we did not get, get the ability to do that. So I just think in general, all of those buckets are, we've maxed out the revenue.
I think Netflix lawsuit happened before Ms. Ebert's time on council.
Thank you. Thank you for the information. There was one other avenue I wanted to inquire about. I know that we have done-
Councilmember Ebert, I'm going to move to Councilmember Doer and then come back to you for your second round.
Great.
Thank you. Councilmember Doer?
Sure, thank you. I assume you can hear me fine. Is that true?
True.
True.
Hello? Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, great. I wanted to follow up on a line of questioning started by Mr. Reese, and that was about these enterprise or redevelopment zones. And if Ms. Attorney could come back. I was kind of confused by the answer, and I want to give a few examples. Could we, in the redevelopment area, do a new park or enhance a park, even if we don't maintain a park in those areas? Could we, I was led to understand that if we wanted to bring some of those funds to a new fire station, for example, the one on GSR is in a tent, the one on Fourth Street, to my knowledge, is in a tent, can we use those funds for those purposes?
Ashley Attorney Assistant City Manager, for the record. Councilmember Doer, part of the annual process that we will be bringing forward to this body is a capital improvement project list, from which council will be able to identify what capital improvements you would like to see utilized with that RDA funds. There are certain specifications, but to your first point of a park, again, it cannot be maintenance. However, if there are capital improvements that need to be made, that would be an allowable source. As it relates to your fire station question, we would need to review more of the specifics of the 1990 plan. We do need to be utilizing most of those funds. They're intended to mitigate blight, is the intention behind it, along with that redevelopment effort.
Well, often like a park, when it's, doesn't have a lot of good facilities, or it has degraded over time and needs new equipment, not maintenance on old equipment, but new equipment, I'm thinking Stewart Park, for example, I believe, is in the RDA too, and we need new, whole new playset, slides, and so on. We've heard from the residents, very dissatisfied. I mean, is that, that would seem to really support growth and economic development to not have a dilapidated park, to your point about blight? Is that an example that would be appropriate?
Yes, I would say that's an acceptable and appropriate use of capital improvements, less from the economic development, but more from the blight mitigation, yes.
Okay. And then also, what about our fire station?
As far as the replacement for the tent?
Yeah, a new fire station. It's by GSR and the redevelopment, RDA too.
Councilmember Doer, this is Jackie. I want to go ahead and interject here, is that one, that requires a particular legal analysis that we have not completed yet, but further, we're going to be bringing back an RDA training for all of council. I think it's going to come at the second meeting-
Next week.
-next week. So a lot of your questions regarding specific uses for RDA will be answered then.
Okay, great. And then I thought we heard from our CFO that we're going to come back with these asks. I'm just wondering about the budget process. I know we're getting our introduction today. When I originally talked to staff, it sounded like this was the day we're supposed to give all of our input, but I'm not sure, is there another presentation to come that would delve more into the asks? Because the asks are not impossible, we would have to drop doing something else. I understand the switch, but priorities may have changed.
Sure, thank you, Vicky Van Buren, Director of Finance. Yes, the additional funding requests are attached that came from the departments, and then if you have additional asks, council, we will add those to our notes today. And as we work through the budget process, again, we don't have final numbers. We will have final numbers toward the end of March. As we get those numbers, we will work with the city manager's office, and then based on comments here today, and then as we continue to move through the process, we will make adjustments based on spaces where we can in those additional asks.
One more question. I think I have a little time.
Councilmember Doer, Councilmember Anderson has her hand up. Okay, she's good. You're about a minute over, so go ahead.
I apologize. I don't have this clock here, but my question was, to the revenue point, you made a comment earlier about the 2%. And my understanding is, if we keep a flat budget, the budget still increases because of the costs, potentially of increases to the cost of staff. So medical insurance going up, for example, any other type of costs that are associated with staff, even if we don't add a staff? Is that correct? Does that come out of the 2%? Is that why it is 2%? Just like some clarity.
2% for revenue growth is independent of the growth of expenditure, so we predict each one independently, because they don't grow at the same rate.
Okay. So for example, have you done any analysis on just keeping the staff we had, have, what that is expected to cost?
Yes, that's what we will see coming forward.
It's coming in the next few slides.
When you say forward today, or a different presentation?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, Councilmember, it's coming forward in the next few slides.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Ebert?
Yeah, thank you. It was a question on redevelopment, and I don't know what, what the parameters are for what you're going to bring forward, but would it be possible to discuss blight, such as like the Harrah's Building? If that could be a project we could work on?
We're going to talk redevelopment on the next presentation. It's just included in here because there are additional ask in that space, but they do have plans that they are working on for that. So I would ask that if we could talk redevelopment at that time, that would be really a little better.
Okay. This is one more about redevelopment, but kind of different. Do, have we done any analysis on whether we would make more revenue off of selling any projects that were done by RDA that have not been put back on the tax rolls?
Councilmember Ebert, we'll get to redevelopment after we get through Vicky's presentation.
Okay.
Thank you.
Go ahead, say it. Okay, moving on. Thank you, Vicky.
Okay, so this next section is just going to focus on general funds for next year. A lot of this I've already highlighted, as far as what percentages we've used to kind of guide this. I think the real takeaway on this one for you as council is to realize, since those two big pieces that you see are really the only pieces that grow in a normal pattern, normally, the other fees only go up between 1%, 2%, and 3% a year, so we don't get much growth from the rest of that pie. So if these two revenue sources are having issues, then that's where that's creating the problem. One good thing that's going on is property tax is still having that compounding growth. So that's really what's keeping us still growing, but at a reduced rate, is that property tax is still growing. All of the other fees on here are either flat or 2% growth, and so even with property tax growing, as the small portion it is, the 28%, it can't hold everything else up, and that, that's the space we're in right now. When you look at, this is really, kind of shows you how that's, that's working. So these are the actuals from fiscal year '22 and projecting out for the current year and then for next year. And so you'll really see property tax, that's that steady growth, every single year, about 8%. You see that stair stepping every single year. C-Tax, that's the one where you're going to see, it's volatile, flat, and just really hasn't grown since '22, just staying right there. Licenses and permits, again, very flat. Franchise fees, in fiscal year '23, you'll see a little bump there, that's when NV Energy increased their rates on electric and gas. So we saw an increase initially, and then this was the decline I was talking about in '24. We actually got less in '24, and now it's flat. So although that was a great bump that year, and that helped us, that actually bridged the gap in the year when C-Tax actually declined 1%. This was what bridged the gap, was that change in the rates from NV Energy, because that was not anticipated at the time the budget was built. So we didn't feel any impact at the city, but there was an impact, it was just offset. Charge for services is going to fluctuate. You'll see in fiscal year '25, in the current year, it looks like it's spiking a little bit. That's because of the strike team reimbursements for fire. Those are not budgeted, we only do those as, as needed, and then the costs go out, and it's just a reimbursement basis. It looks like it spikes, but it's just because of that. For the most part, charge for services are very flat in other areas. Other sources, looks like it has a little spike there as well in fiscal year '24. That's when ARPA money was approved by this council, around $5 million, to supplement the loss in revenues to the general fund, so you'll see that spike there as well. So again, really the only space in all of these revenues that we have that's trending and growing on year-over-year is property tax. C-Tax, if you want to dive into it a little bit deeper here, I'll be kind of brief on these slides, because we've talked about it so much. But again, you'll see those really big years of growth. Adopted budget is in that gold year, and then the actuals are the estimates and the out-years in the blue bar. And so you'll see in fiscal year '21 and '22, we had 19% growth and 10% growth in those years, year-over-year. And those, that was really that stimulus funds from COVID money. Normal growth is around 4%. That's what you see in fiscal year '20, prior to all of that, it's around 4%. Since then, that's that whole soft landing coming out of this, what it looked like. We actually declined in '23, negative 1%. And then in '24, this is the point where we were building the budget for the current year that we're in, we had 3% growth. So that's where people thought, okay, feds are doing things, it's working, we're going to start to- start to head back, and we're going to go back to that same level, the 4% or 5% growth. But what's actually happened is we've really flattened out now. So now we have 0% growth. We grew three, and now we've flattened again. And so it may stagger. Again, we don't have data on really how it's going to go. So I think our best approach is to be very conservative and compare to other agencies as far as what they're seeing on their side as well. How did we get here? We've talked about this. 4% growth is your normal growth, COVID year growth, stimulus money, those are '21 and '22. This is percentage growth, same information, but just giving you an idea of how compounding growth works. So if, so in '23, we had negative growth. In '24, we had 3% growth. And then going forward, we have very minimal growth projected out here. We're in year three of this five-year period out in this area. And if we had normal growth, we would have grown $4 million in '23, another $4 million in '24. And it compounds and continues to grow on top of each other. Over a five-year period, you end up with about $20 million of ongoing money if it continues to grow. And that's that stair step that you saw with property tax not occurring here. If you pull out just the five years that I was talking about that we're in, we're in year three, I've kind of highlighted that area to really, to focus on. These are the actual dollar impacts. The other one was kind of high level idea behind it. But these are the actual dollar amounts that occur based on these percentages as we go forward. So at the end of the five-year period, we have ongoing revenue of $7 million versus $20 million. So it's a $13 million gap there. And this isn't something we make up quickly over time. It's not like tomorrow or next year or the next, you know, the year after that, we're just going to make this up. We're not going to see a big jump and then be able to build on that. Once this is gone, we have to continue to build back. And this relates back to a question that I believe Councilmember Anderson brought up about the timeframe of the impact of when we were in a recession before and coming back and where we were at. It took us nine years when we went into a recession to climb out of it and get back to where we were. It will take a long time to make up for compounding revenue growth loss. Property tax, this one is really good. You can see the percentages on the bottom on this one. The seven and a half, 8% growth generally as we move forward. We have 9% growth estimated for this year because we're actually trending 1.5% above budget where we were, and that equates to about 9% growth for this year. This one, you will not see big growth leaps in it. So we can't ever anticipate that we're going to have some big change in here that's going to happen and bring in a bunch of revenue because of the tax caps and the structure of the depreciation. So the tax caps of the 3% on residential and the 8% on commercial really limit the growth in this space. 8% to 9% is really maxed out in this space because we're limited at the 3% cap. So you wonder, well, how, how do we get to the 8%? It's that new growth. So new growth is coming onto the books and making up that. So we're still averaging about 8% to 9% or even on here, 7% to 9%. We're still averaging that even with tax caps on residential at three, but that's the new growth piece. And so I'll stop there. This was, this was a shorter section, just revenues, and I'll answer any questions here.
Councilmembers, I don't see any hands raised, but I'll look around. Councilmember Anderson?
Before we get away from new growth, I was just hoping we could talk about that a little bit more. And it's a misperception, I think, in our community that growth is all bad sometimes. I want to talk about how it's necessary in our budget with the way that the property taxes are structured in the state of Nevada. Can we just talk a little bit more granularly about how the new development and growth is what is keeping our, our heads above water on property tax?
It is because, you know, once a property comes on the books, it can be depreciated because depreciation is part of the calculation for property tax here in Nevada. So there's several things that are limiting us on this revenue source. It's the property tax caps first, and then second, it's the depreciation, and then third, it's not resetting on sale. So all, it's a combination of all of those things are really limiting growth in this space. So you have a new house that comes on the books. They pay based on that new house value. You have a house that's sold at the same price. Say you have a new house at $500,000, and you have a house that's maybe 75 years old, it sells at $500,000, the same price. You're going to pay very different tax bills. One's going to pay a tax bill more around $5,000 a year. The other one's going to pay a tax bill that's around $1,000.
Which one, the new or the old?
The older home will pay because it's fully depreciated because depreciation is 1% and 1.5% up to 50 years.
So the older home that more likely is more expensive, has a higher value, is paying significantly less property tax than newer entry-level homes?
Yes, because of the depreciation factor, and it doesn't reset on sale. So even if you sell that house and it sells for the same price as a similar home, you know, value, the tax doesn't change on it because it doesn't reset on sale. And it still is fully depreciated at that point, or 75% because it's, the max is the 75% limit on the depreciation.
Thank you.
Councilmember Reese?
Thank you so much. And Ms. Anderson, I think your comments were very perceptive. It's something that I've struggled with for a long time. It sort of explains why someone like, I saw one of the public commenters sent us a letter today, Ms., I think Beth Dory or Kevin Dory, I'm not sure who it is writing when that person writes to us. But they own like, I don't know, 20 properties in Reno. And so it's clear that their interest in this is sort of personal to them because they don't want to pay their fair share of taxes, right? And so it's something that I think the legislature has to take up. And certainly, we've asked, I think there's some bills percolating through the legislature. They would rather blame, you know, drunken spending and all this kind of nonsense than to really think introspectively about themselves. And so that's kind of what happens in those circumstances.
Councilmember Doer?
Yeah, thank you. And I wanted to speak to this issue of depreciation as well. For many, many years, we have understood that depreciation is the biggest hit to our property tax situation. We could be doing much better if upon sale, the values reset and people were paying more in line with what their property is worth. This, this separation between new homes and old homes is, is really not sustainable. We're the only state that factors depreciation. It goes back to the 1800s. It needs to be fixed. We have asked and asked the legislature to address it. They've come close a few times, but we haven't been able to overcome that. And I think as a council, it's one of our greatest focuses, or should be, is encouraging and supporting our legislature to address this issue. It dwarfs new homes, you know, new home, we might grow 5%, but on the existing inventory, we're losing big time. So I, I just think it's a critical piece and anything we can do. As Councilmember Reese said, my understanding is there's at least one, maybe more, bill circulating, and hopefully they'll, they'll figure out how to cross the line this time. Also, at the same time, we have to be careful because there's a lot of cynicism when we come to approve or deny new developments. People have over the years said to me, well, you approved that because of the income. And I've told them, I have never looked at that. I look at each project on its merits, and I'll vote yes if, if the merits are there, and no if they're not. But I've never factored in, how, is it all about us getting more money? And I think we just need to be careful when we talk about that issue so that we retain the citizens' confidence in that area. All right, thank you.
Thank you. I think we can move on. Thank you, Vicky.
So the next section, we're going to talk about the expenses for the general fund. So as we roll this up, again, the baseline budget, everything we know in salary and benefits with the COLAs and the other increases that we know we are obligated to pay, we build that in based on full staffing level, current levels. And then the services and supplies as submitted by the departments, asking them to remain within a flat budget, which we have for many years. Impacts that we don't know as we roll this up, there's still a few outstanding. There's some collective bargaining agreements that have contract reopeners, and that's due to the PERS piece. So if PERS goes up, they have a contract re opener for that. We don't know the impact of that. Some of the groups have given written notice that they are not going to open. Some have given notice verbally that they are not going to. But we can't, it's still kind of an unknown unless we have something in writing. So we're putting it on here. IAFF, we have not built anything in for an increase or changes to their current contract. So this bill doesn't include anything for that, and they only agreed to a one-year contract last year. So they are actively in negotiations this year. And so any impact of that would be in addition to anything that you see today. And then FLSA, over time, that's still being worked on. At this point, we think it's around, it's less than $1 million. We've had a person out from New World, which is the financial system, to work on that, to get that resolved. But it's going to be a CBA by CBA agreement as they figure out what each group, what the impact is to each group. So we don't really, in general, I think it's less than $1 million as far as this big picture. It's not a big dollar in my mind as I'm building this out. The bigger issue is going to be IAFF because that really is not included here for what you see. And we do, when we build this, build it as we normally would with capital. And this would be capital maintenance for buildings, parks, and then for the fire apparatus program as we normally would, and include contingency. And so all of these things are included in this $341 million number. As we move forward, what's, what's creating this and how did we get here as far as the increased costs that we're seeing? And really what we're seeing from the 25 estimated budget going to the 26 budget, we're seeing an increase of $22 million. And really that increase is between the COLAs, the special pays, class and comp was a really big increase that hit as far as increasing some of the ranges. So instead of having five steps, six steps. So some of that has significant impacts as we move forward. There were some compaction issues that we've built into here because it was part of the agreements that we should be at a certain point. So that has been built in. The only things that we are known were the ones I just mentioned. PERS continues to increase, and we had very, very large increases in that for this year. We had, well, for '26, so they'll start July 1. So they're going from 33.5% to 36.75% for regular members. So that's an increase of 3.25%. And then fire and police went from 50 to 58.75%. So almost a 9% increase for police and fire in that PERS piece of it. And so those are the impacts that we're going to see every other year as we continue to move forward from PERS, something similar. I thought the increases last time were very high, but they're still very high. So I, I think this might be a new norm, but hopefully we can wrap our arms around it and they can figure some of this out as we move forward. But really, the $22 million cost increase from the current year to the build next year, 10 million of it is in salaries and 12 million is in benefits. And of that 12 million, a lot of that has to do with PERS and the impact of that. Oh, and I did want to mention that the yellow bars are just showing you the average annual growth rate of the revenues in the general fund. So you can see, we were kind of, we were keeping pace up until '23, very close above it in those years when we got a lot of money from C-tax. But then even in '23, when revenues declined for C-tax, but franchise fees went up, we were still growing pretty well. But as we start to move forward from '24 on, that revenue growth piece of it is only around 5% in one year, 2% this year. You know, it's very small compared to anywhere from 5% to 9% that we're going to see in the growth in salary and benefits. And when salary and benefits increase that much, that's such a big piece of our pie when we look at the whole thing for expenses. That's going to create the challenge to meet when revenues aren't increasing at the same rate. If you look at expenditures by department, you'll see a lot of blue on this slide because the blue represents the salary and benefits. So you'll really see that we're a service organization even across the board. This is not specific to any one department. Every department is very service oriented and has staffing to provide those services. IT, which is on here as do it, you'll see that theirs is about equal because they carry all the carrying costs of the software agreements and all of the software related items. So probably half of their budget is people, and then they, probably a little more than half is the software costs and all of the IT costs that it takes to maintain the organization as a whole. And then in maintenance and operations, they will have a lot in their supply and costs as well for maintenance type things. But in, across all the other spaces, it's, it's blue, it's people. When you roll them up together, and you may have been noticing this, revenues that we talked about are 317 million based on how we're projecting them, and expenditures are 341 million. So we have a budget deficit of approximately $24 million. This does not include those three items specifically, and most importantly, the IFF does not include that. So we're looking at a $24 million gap between what we have and how we would normally build the budget. What we're talking to you today about is some of the ideas that we have in order to address this funding gap. And we're looking for feedback in this space and in other spaces, if you can think of areas. One of the things that the city manager told departments early on is that they needed to reduce service and supply budgets by 5% and to anticipate having to do that because we knew challenges were coming. So departments have submitted to us their analysis and their reductions. So that equates to about $3 million. Eliminating contingency is one of the things that Manager Bryant has brought up as well. That's $1 million can be eliminated short term as well. So $4 million right there related to operating expenses that we can fill part of this gap. The remainder part, really looking at one-time funds. And this is one of the things we talked about when, when the collective bargaining agreements came forward, and we knew we were going to have to use one-time money to kind of fund some of that for this year, was if things don't get a lot better and we can't bridge that gap, where would we go? Well, we'd look at capital funds probably first and see spaces where we could dial back some of that. And that, we've had those conversations, and now we are actually in that space. Use of one-time capital funds in some areas like the second floor remodel, that is proposed on here to be pulled back, as well as closing out some other work, like the parking lot at Moana Pool. It's done, and there was some excess money there. So between those, that's about $3 million. And then we have some sale of property that has already gone through. We have those funds on hand. And then council approved the Special Assessment District excess funds. Matt Taylor from my office brought that forward. And those funds, one time in use, but they would be available to use toward this gap. Other things that we did was, were going through the actual capital plans. So annually, we typically fund annual maintenance to parks maintenance and to building maintenance and to the fire apparatus program. We continue to put money toward that annually normally. That amount is 3.4 million. What we've done is gone through and worked with the departments to see how much do you have in those funds that are specific for that, that are you going to use this year, and how much do you have remaining? And so based on that analysis, all three of those programs would have enough funds to continue to operate and do the things that they need to do for next year because they haven't spent prior year, portions of prior year allocations that have continued to roll forward. And so this is not a long-term fix because we can't technically not have maintenance at some point. But for next year, this would be an option of not putting any additional money toward the, towards those programs because they do still have some to use for next year that I, that we believe is sufficient. And it's not just me doing that. We've worked with the departments to talk to them about it. Is this sufficient? And does this work for you? And yes. Same thing with fleet replacement. Again, this came up when the bargaining units contracts came forward, said, you know, we may not have funds next year because we know we have a gap. We may not have funds for replacing vehicles. So what we can do is we, we've built in to replace, we can build in to replace, to do the maintenance and all of the repairs on the vehicles and items that we currently have. But we wouldn't be buying any new vehicles for next year. So reducing the fleet replacement funds by 4 million is proposed here. It would allow 400,000 still to be budgeted, and that would just be in the case of an accident, car gets wrecked in accident, and they need to replace it, or engine or something else. It would just be very minimal funds in case there's something catastrophic. But overall, it would not be replacing any vehicles in that space. And again, we worked with the departments to figure out, does this work for a year? Will it work? We've really had a very robust plan because that was part of your direction as council to start building up in some of these areas. to start building up in some of these areas. So, during the recession, these were areas that were cut, and we've really worked to build them back into a space where they have the sufficient needs and they're really replacing as they should be. And we're in that space now. So, to take a break for a year is a space, I think, that is an option. And then, workers' comp, we've been trying to build that up, and we've just been adding a million dollars each year. And this is really due to the heart and lung claims that we know eventually will need to be paid by the city. And so, we have actuarial results on workers' comp that we get as part of the ACFOR, as part of our financial process to do that. And so, this is a space like OPEB. We have obligations to meet, and we try to increase that funding to meet those obligations in the future. Are we meeting them currently? Yes, we're PEGO and we're meeting them, but we would like to continue to build it because we know in the future, we will have even more obligations there. And then, use of fund balance. So, 2.8 million in fund balance is proposed here. It's about 1% in the current year, but what you have to recognize as we continue to build the budget, if we're not increasing the fund balance and those costs continue to go up, it's not the same percentage as we move out. So, if we take out this percentage now and we move forward, this would reduce the fund balance to about 12.5% as for next year, based on what we have. Still, even after doing all of these things, we have a $3.7 million remaining gap. So, that remaining gap is open, obviously, for discussion, as are any of these other items here. But this is really all the space that we've come to for one-time funds, reducing programs, still working within a space where departments can still do what's needed on a daily basis. And it's not long, it's, these aren't long-term solutions, but they are short-term solutions for us in the interim until we really see what the economy is going to do. The remaining gap, some of the thoughts for that are looking at programs, again, looking at maybe memberships. Some of the members on this body have mentioned, maybe we don't pay some memberships, maybe we cut some donation funds, cut some other things, maybe there's some other spaces. Every dollar counts, so if there's some things that can come into this space to fill that gap, that's part of it. And then, freezing positions is another option in there too, because that's currently how we're technically not frozen, but we're holding some positions in the current year to get some savings. Building this budget, if that's filling part of this gap, this, we would have to identify positions to freeze so that we can build the budget and make a note that they're frozen. They wouldn't go away, but they would be technically unfunded unless things change. And obviously, we come back with augmentations throughout the year, but that's really the space where we are. So, once you do that, so if, if we find, if these items on here are acceptable in the top part, and then figure out the remaining gap as we work through this process and get the final revenue numbers, that's $24 million. That meets the gap for next year as we move forward. This is what it would look like. So, same slide I just showed you in the budget build, but we would be using one-time funds. And I know this is a little strange, but the $8 million is different one-time funds than the current year. So, we put little, the little breakout for you on that. That's from the fund balance, that's from property sales, and from some other closed capital projects. That equates to about $8 million in revenues. That's one time that we could use this coming year. And then, reductions on the other side, you'll notice that salary and benefits is now 80% of the budget. It's gone from 76% to 80%. And that's because we've had to pull out kind of the one-time maintenance-type money, contingency, additional workers' comp. And that's that little red piece you see over there. So, there's $16 million of reductions, and that includes the items that I just talked about, departments decreasing service and supplies by 5%, workers' comp capital, and then that ongoing maintenance, and then, again, the discussion item, the 3.7. So, really, what happens to the pie chart is salary and benefits continues to get bigger as we, you know, focus on maintaining the staffing levels and then implementing these reductions. So, I have a stopping point here for conversation and discussion.
Councilmember Ebert?
Thank you. So, I have a lot of questions. I'll try and get through as many as I can. I don't know if we'll have two rounds on this. Okay, thank you. So, one of the things I had a question about is eliminating annual capital funds. What would fall under that category?
It would be building maintenance, parks maintenance, and these are their capital funds that they have to do really capital-type repair items. And then, the fire apparatus program.
Okay. Are these things that we could potentially look for grant funds to help us cover?
I'm sure there are some grant funds in the space for capital projects, and I think staff is actively doing that currently. I mean, we're currently looking for grants and working with the departments on looking for grants all the time.
Okay, so we might be able to find outside funding sources to kind of help bridge that gap a little bit?
Well, for next year, even without the outside sources, I think that these funds are still, I wouldn't say healthy, but they have enough funds to do the things that they need for next year because normally, we give them an annual allocation. That ends up in their capital account, and if they don't use all the funds, it rolls over to the next year. So, they still have some unspent funds in there that they're not going to use this year, and they maybe are going to draw out some of those projects and complete them over, you know, a longer period of time. And so, that's really the process that I've worked with the departments personally with, figuring this out with them on building maintenance, fleet maintenance, I mean, building maintenance, parks maintenance, and then also the fire apparatus. So, they, they all have sufficient funds that they're not, I don't feel that they're going to feel the pinch, and they agree for next year, but it's not a long-term solution. It's kind of a one-time shot, but, because you can't defer maintenance forever.
Yeah, of course. Okay, so that was one of them. Another one I wanted to ask about, and maybe this isn't the right place, but what's happening with OPEB?
OPEB, we have not contributed to for a couple of years, except for the employee match portion that we are required to for those employees that put into it as part of the match, because some of the CBAs require new people coming into the system. They have to put in for, I believe, five years. I think it's 5%, and we match to that. So, that match piece, yes, we're just not doing additional funding to OPEB.
Okay. Are we going to run into any problems with that?
We're on PEGO right now. It's built into the, into what we have. If we could get to a point where we could switch over and pay from the OPEB trust, that would be wonderful. It's growing at a very good rate. I believe we made around $4 million on just interest alone last year, so it's up to almost $32 million. We need it to be, in my opinion, around the 60% mark. We want it 60% funded where we could switch it over, and we wouldn't be doing PEGO and contributing to it. And depending on, we would need to start contributing to it again in a significant manner to make that happen.
Okay, and can you tell me, like, ballpark?
Councilmember Ebert, I'm going to move to Councilmember Reese, and we'll be, we'll be flexible here. This is the biggest thing that we do, so I think councilmembers are okay with a little bit more time.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. I want to focus, of course, on the slide that says, how do we address the fiscal year '26 funding gap? First of all, thank you for laying out a path, right? I sort of start with the first thing that you started with when we began, which is a budget is a reflection of our priorities, right? How we, as policymakers, prioritize the things that we view as important from a political and policymaker standpoint are reflected in our budget and therefore should be how we approach the budget process. So, thank you for that framing issue at the beginning, and now I look at this. I'm not sure that I have a specific and identifiable concern about any of these line items, meaning I can't say, well, I really like the workers' comp fund to be funded and maybe over here. I think what I'm looking for is more the city manager's office and your office having leadership to say, look, we have done the work on our side from a staff perspective. Here is our recommendation, and then we have a remaining gap, and this is where it starts to get more challenging, because I think none of us are professionally in your departments. So, it's hard for us to substitute our judgment for the day-to-day minutia that you all go through. What I will say is I continue to believe very strongly in our public safety apparatus, so that's all of our police, fire, dispatch, maintenance, and operation. I believe strongly in our parks and recreation department. And so, again, my reflection of my value politically as I think about what is important to me, I think is, is reflected on this slide, meaning I'm not seeing deep cuts to those areas. The $3.7 million remaining gap, I suppose two things are true for me, and I think you said this in an earlier part of the presentation, which was, you know, you come back to us quarterly with budget augmentations with new numbers from the state. I suppose in my mind, I think we plan for the worst and hope for the best, meaning that as we get into fiscal year '26, hopefully, we'll have the state's apparatus system working a little bit harder to tell us where the money is coming from and how. And then, ultimately, we're in a little bit of unknown territory. I don't want us to get to a point where we're like, oh, we didn't know it was happening to us. I want us to be proactive about it. So, I'll be looking forward to the recommendations that you have with regard to this. I don't see OPEB not being funded on this, but I make an assumption that we are not funding it next year above the required match. So, those are my thoughts on this first round. I think it's very helpful. Still a large number, but I suppose less large than I thought it might be.
City Manager Bryant, did you want to address that?
Yeah, I would like to reiterate, and thank you for kind of opening the door for us to express how we built this recommended budget and why we included certain reductions that we did. The goal from the beginning has been to keep people employed. That has been the priority. As you saw the numbers at how low the staffing ratio is for the city of Reno relative to the population, and any reduction in the number of employees will reduce the level of service. You also saw that we have a 69% FTE, total general fund rate, that is dispatch, police, and fire. That leaves very little for any other services that are provided, and many of which are necessary in order to support police, dispatch, and fire. So, just, the overarching philosophy was, how do we keep people status quo? And that's what's reflected here. We're down to 3.7 million to identify some other opportunities for reductions there. And again, that does not include the IAFF contract or the approximately $1 million associated with the FLSA overtime that we will be working on. So, thank you for the opportunity to kind of reiterate how we got to where we got to.
Thank you, Manager Bryant. And I guess I will say, on slide 26, this is an effort of everybody within these walls and as an organization coming together and saying, what can we do? This really isn't one person, one department saying, we're going to take the burden of this, we're going to work together as a city. And for that, I thank you, City Manager Bryant, for your leadership with less than a year on a job. Thank you. And Vicky, I have two, one statement and a quick question. The budget that we are looking at does not include that $32.5 million in asks, right?
Correct.
Okay, so without any of the asks, we're already behind.
I didn't clarify during that time, too. Some of those asks may be available in other funds, like street fund or RDA, some other funds, but in the general fund, no. But we haven't included in any of them because they are just asked at this point for consideration.
And I fully believe, like Councilmember Reese, you are the experts. I know you, the slide that I just mentioned shows that you are all working very, very hard to get us to a place of even, and that's very much appreciative. I mean, I have ideas in the middle of the night, and I call, say, hey, can we do this sponsorship, or what about this? But I fully believe you guys are doing everything that we need to do. I'm just going to make a blanket statement. We have a significant revenue problem, significant revenue problem, and at some point, we are going to have to look at a decrease in salaries and benefits or, or something. I mean, if we don't look at the salaries and benefits piece, we can't ever get to the, or without the revenue, we can't ever get to a place where we're growing, it seems like in my mind. So, thank you for your work that you have done in this space for this year, but this is going to continue to grow. It's not going away next year, right?
Right. We do have a revenue, it's a revenue problem because it just is not growing at a pace to sustain what we really need.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Anderson?
I just wanted to really express my full appreciation for the amount of work that the entire city staff has done to get us to this. Is it $3.7 million in question here? So, I just wanted to say my sincerest thank you for that. The second thing that I just wanted to get on record, it's not a question, is that I don't see an area on this budget that isn't in support or related to public safety. And so, I just want to make sure that as we move forward with whatever, that $3.7 million, how we get to that balanced budget, I just want everyone in the city to know that, from my perspective, everything that we do here relates to the safety of the public in some form or fashion. And so, I just want to make sure that we're not making strange, you know, sweeping cuts in certain departments because they don't have a badge. And we need to be really, really focused on how they support all of our departments. So, I just wanted to make sure that we got that on record.
Councilmember Dewar?
Yes, thank you. Again, I want to also express my appreciation to how much hard work has gone into getting to this, to this point. I had the benefit of meeting with the staff and talk about, you know, what kind of things they were proposing, and I really think they did a really phenomenal job to reduce that delta. We were short something like 24, 25 million, and here we are down to less than 4 million. So, I just want to throw out some ideas. They're probably not worth millions. I agree with some of the previous comments that we're going to have to look at how to reduce our salaries. That's the biggest thing in the budget. So, if that means freezing positions, I understand it, I hate it. I too believe everyone here is performing a critical function. We've been really careful on who we've added, what positions we've added, and what jobs they do. I also appreciated, I had a good conversation with their staff, that understanding if we do have to freeze positions, that we still keep the position in our roster, but it's not funded so that the department director has the ability later to bring that position back. They don't have to re-justify, oh, I lost this park superintendent, and now I have to re-justify bringing them back. No, they already justified it and re-justified it. I want to make sure if something has to be frozen, that it remains in their inventory, and if money situation changes, there's an opportunity to refund that. Also on the positions, if, I don't know if we, as a body, are going to go in and, based on the manager's recommendation, and say, oh, yes, this should be frozen, or that should be frozen. But what I do want to know is, whatever it ends up, I want to give the manager flexibility so it's not frozen for life. If there's a new need that develops and she thinks that that has a higher priority, I'd rather look at the dollars, not the positions. It may be two lower-paid positions are equal to one higher-paid position, and she has to balance that. So, I want to make sure we give her that flexibility. Some of the things that Vicky just mentioned that we could potentially reduce, I support reducing our council funds. But again, it's not a very big part of our budget, but even cutting it in half, if that will help. But I would recommend keeping some for us to work with and help dire situations. Memberships, 100%, I've seen some of the lists. I mean, if we can't join, you know, some of the things we've traditionally joined in the past for a year or two, then so be it. I also note that I read, and I'm not sure where this stands, but that HUD was cut 86%. 86%. That's where we get our funds for housing. Many of them get passed through to the state and then get passed through to us. So, we're going to have to take a look at programs that are being cut at the federal level. If we're dependent on those programs, I think we might have to say, you know, temporarily, we can't continue as we had, and housing has been one of our top priorities. And I would hate to cut housing, but I'm using it as an example. 86% cut at this point. And then, finally, I just wanted to mention something like a new revenue source. I've talked to many people, and it seems that, for one, we're doing parking enforcement, I mean, we're doing a parking study, and it's in the works, and it's not finished. But I think we should accelerate it and finish it because to hear people talk, no one gets a parking ticket, no one. And I think if we increased our enforcement, that's a whole untapped revenue source. I mean, we mean it, we have parking meters out, we charge, but we don't seem to be enforcing. And I think if we just did minimal amounts of enforcement, that could potentially bring in some dollars, maybe not. in some dollars, maybe not millions, but at least I think it's, we're in a world of every bit helps. I want to just mention something I would not cut.
Councilmember Doer, can I just real check, can I check real quick here, a minute over to see if other council members have questions? Councilmember Reese.
Sure, I'm happy to come back.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Madam Vice Mayor. And I think Ms. Doer's comments are very spot on. Part of it is, is that Ms. Doer, you know, led an agency with a substantial budget, so she has experience in this area. And so I find the words very instructive. I too believe that the manager should have a high degree of discretion when looking at and returning to us with options in real time. Same thing for you, Ms. Van Buren. As I said, I think as you update us, as the budget develops over a period of time, perhaps there will be greater cuts that have to be made, perhaps there will be less cuts that have to be made. I am reluctant to sort of paradigmatically say that I think everything can be done on the backs of salary and benefits. And the reason why I say that is because it's not too long ago that we went out and did all the studies that analyze our positions, positions relative to other municipal entities inside and outside the state of Nevada. So that kind of parity study that we've done to say, hey, people are at parity or not, their jobs are priced right for the market. You know, people don't generally go into government service for the glory of it or to make a ton of money. They're choosing government service over the private sector in many ways. But I suppose one of the things about that is that the benefits may be a little bit different or better, the retirement is available at the end. So I am reluctant to just say that that is where I think this takes us. I absolutely believe that we can find, you know, League of Cities, for example, that could be something that could go, or reducing the cost to memberships to like EDON is another one of the legacy organizations. Our council discretionary funds, I think that is a fine place to start to. And like Ms. Doer said, everything is subject to some historical saying, it was there, we're not going to make you justify it later. If things go in the other direction, or if we hit a boom year, perhaps those things will come back very quickly, I don't know. But again, I'll sort of close this second round of comments with saying, I don't think you want elected leaders who are supposed to chart policy positions and courses sort of micromanaging or looking over your exact line-by-line choices. I think, again, if they align with the principles and values that we hold as policymakers, I trust that you will make those choices, and we will get there together. So as many ideas as I can generate aren't going to close the $3.4 million gap, but we're sort of all of us saying very similar things. We can do that work together, but also give some discretion to the city manager's office and your office.
Thank you. Councilmember Ebert.
Yes, thank you. Just to circle back to OPEB really quick, you had mentioned that you would like that account to be at 60%. What's the dollar amount that is 60%? Do you know? Okay, so we're not even halfway there. But you said we got 4 million?
Around 4, and it's going to vary based on the interest rates. So if the interest rates are higher, we're going to earn more money on it out there. And obviously, compounding effect, if we contribute more, it's going to compound, and we'll get there faster. And those are some of the things that we've talked about in previous years, but in this year, it's really not even an option that we can contribute.
The other recommendations, I saw for 3 million, reduction to department services and 1 million to eliminate contingency. What would be the reduction in services?
Each department came up with their own, in the department supplies, is that the one, the 3 million?
Okay.
So each department had to cut 5% out of their budget. So every department was asked to do that. They have all come together and found ways to make that work with what they currently have. And so we have that information, and we can implement that, if that's something.
But are there services, like actual services for the community?
There probably will be some impact, and we are gathering that information now, and we'll have more discussions on that as we move forward. But this is, you know, kind of our starting point to see what feedback we have.
Okay.
And Councilmember Ebert, just to add to that, we kind of started at baseline with any travel and training that was not required for the individuals' certifications. I am a huge believer in training. I think that it is vital for professional and personal growth, but that was one of the first things that we eliminated several months ago. And along with that, you know, generally you have to travel to get some training. So a lot of the reductions in services and supplies budget, that was what was cut. We had renegotiating of some software contracts, we've eliminated some software contracts as we identified not heavy users of certain ones. So at the moment, we haven't identified anything specific that will be community identified, however. As we move forward with closing the 3.7 gap plus IAFF and FLSA, we will bring back to you in the next month or so how we are going to close that gap, and there is virtually no way that it will not have a community impact. Even if we freeze positions, for example, in maintenance and operations, that might impact the frequency with which people can do plow for snow, the frequency with which they can sweep streets or fill potholes. So when we do come back, we're going to identify each position that I am recommending that we freeze, and the impact of each position, and any other programs that we might need to reduce or eliminate.
Okay, thank you. I am out of time, but I will have more questions if we can have another round.
Sure. Mr. Marti, or Councilwoman Martinez.
Thanks so much, Madam Vice Mayor. I think my only question, or I have two questions. You talked about software costs for IT, but I'm curious about hardware costs. Are those bore by each department depending on their specific needs?
New computers, yes, if they're buying something new, but they do have a replacement program that they fund through IT. So depending on the year, say, I have a computer in finance, it's estimated it'll last five years. It may last longer. If it lasts longer, then we don't need the funds as soon. But we do have a replacement plan that is part of their budget and anticipated that we will have to replace some of those things. If you have a new position that you want in your department, as part of that cost, we anticipate, you know, uniforms, vehicles, computer costs, any of that stuff, we attribute to the cost of that new position so that it's not an unknown. This position is going to cost X amount, and it's going to impact all of these departments when we bring those forward.
Great. And I think in preparation for this meeting, as has been mentioned, we've had multiple meetings with you throughout, I think since, starting in December. And during one of those meetings, I think you had brought up, and correct me if I'm wrong, but since fiscal year 20, we've added about 295 new employees?
Across all funds, yes, over the last five years, yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I put that on record, just because even with the FTE per capita that we're at now, it would have been obviously a lot lower if it hadn't been for the last five years of additions that we've approved and looked at. The other thing I wanted to ask was the PERs split between employer and staff and seeing what that was. You did mention the amounts that were increased, whether it was police and fire or other staff members, and what the cost is, the actual cost to the city as opposed to the employee, if you can kind of mention those things, too.
That one's a little harder to answer, just because of the way it's implemented. So when a PERs increase occurs, say it's 6%, or in this case, 8%, a little more than 8%, but just for ease of numbers, salaries are reduced for the employee by that 4%, and the city pays the other 4%. So the burden is shared equally, 50% on those increases. Dollar-wise, I don't know that it exactly comes out to the exact same dollars, because once you decrease someone's salary, then what we pay in PERs decreases, too. But those are all negotiated and implemented in their CBAs, and all of the CBAs currently exist, that any increase is split and shared between the employee and the employer.
Thank you so much.
I don't know if we're at the point where we're saying what's important or what's not important, because everything is important, but I'll just throw a couple of things out. I think you've heard public safety, number one, everybody on the, in, you know, on this council, it's a number one priority. For me, I think that we have really done great strides in our code enforcement and our park rangers and some of our security programs that are super important. And the reason why I say that is because when I look at the reports that we get weekly of, from Reno Direct, those are the places that I see that people need the most services in, or the, I don't want to say complaints, but concerns are coming in from our residents. So those are things that are very important to me. I think we're all going to definitely have to make some sacrifices. I know I saw in there a sale of properties of $735,000, and I think Councilwoman Martinez and I were hoping some of that money would go to the restore program. It doesn't look like that's going to happen. And I think I would be interested in understanding about our boards and commissions, thinking about the other boards and commissions that we sit on that aren't NRS or that we have involvement in. A lot of them seem to be after hours or might be requiring overtime, and we always have staff assistance. So I'm not sure if that is a place where we might be able to look at what's NRS required, what is absolutely necessary, and if that's a space we can become more efficient in. And to echo some of my other council members, love that we have discretionary funds, but I think we're going to have to get down to, I think, Manager Bryant says, it's time to get, we have to buy tires for the car. We don't get to go out and, you know, get new things for the car, fuzzy dice, we're keeping the tires going. So those are my comments. Councilmember Doer, I think you're up next.
Yeah. All right, thank you. I had said some things where I thought we could cut or increase revenues. I want to reiterate the parking. I think we need to take a really hard look at it, and even if it's 20,000 or 50,000 that it would bring in a year, I think it's worth doing. In terms of things I would like to see less cuts to, public safety is always top of mind, and it's very critical that people in our community feel that their city's safe and that we're not skipping on that. But hand in hand with that, I've noticed just the political dialogue that's sweeping the country and the level of, I used this word earlier, cynicism that's affecting us, and I see it even more. I'll give you an example. My last NAB meeting, I had 65 attendees. Two months before that, I had a similar amount. The public is hungry to influence our government and help us set priorities. They may not be there today, but I know that they do show up, and it may not be across the board. Some of the NABS are just getting restarted, for example. But in communicating with Manager Bryant recently at a different question, she mentioned something about potentially cutting back on the NABS. And I just want to say, I don't support that at this time, for a very specific reason. I mentioned in our last meeting, we had to go overtime. There's so many projects coming in, and the public want to weigh in, and we were able to extend our time to three and a half hours. It's usually two and a half hours or three at the most. I think it's incredibly important to maintain that dialogue, especially since often the projects that come to the NAB have to go immediately to planning commission. And that is how the public finds out what is coming up. This is their first notification, and those comments are very important to both our staff in revising or evaluating, I mean, projects, but also to the planning and commission. It's their feedback. So I want to make sure that we maintain that direct avenue with our residents. We give them more time at the NABS while we give them three minutes to speak. We also often give them a second or third shot to fully express themselves. I think if we cut into that, we'll be doing ourselves all a disservice. It will, I think it will not result, it will appear that we're closing our government, and I don't think that's our intent. So while we're balancing things, I at least wanted to put in a pitch for that. If we have any empty vacancies there, I think we do need to fill them. We haven't added to the space in over 10 years. We've had the same three liaisons doing all of the work. We now have an extra ward in terms of meetings, and I think it's appropriate. At one time, we had some vacancies, and we had one liaison, one, handling all five, and they did with no cut in services. So I know it can be done. I would just recommend a hard look at that. Maintain our accessibility to the public. It's the only way, too, that we have helped to do any kind of policy work. So thank you.
Councilmember Ebert, this was your, I think, last round?
All right. Is there anything that we could do, like with room rates, to increase that? I know they're kind of down right now, but is that another avenue that we could pursue for an increase in revenue?
As far as room tax, that's in a couple more slides from now. It's very flat, and we could have some conversations on that, but there's not a space in there. It's very flat as well, and we'll talk about that in a couple more slides.
Okay. So a couple more things I just want to get through quickly. The IT department, on their, on that slide with them on the chart, I just want to stress how important it is that I think we keep them funded as well. I know that we rely on our, all of our electronic services to be secure. And I know as a government agency, that there's people that will specifically target us. So I just want to say that we need to make sure that they're a priority as well, just so that the city can function properly. I don't want us to be victims of hacking or anything like that, and I know that's kind of always a possibility. The other thing I wanted to say or ask was, can we get a comparison of like the average city of Reno salary versus the surrounding regions? And I think it's very helpful to us, just like that number of city of Reno employees per 1,000 residents. I think that'll be really helpful to us, just in the eyes of the public, to show where we stand, to kind of help with that perception that there's, you know, we're spending too much on salaries, because I know, you know, that's part of what people are upset about when they don't, you know, follow what's going on closely. The other thing I had was, you said if we use the fund balance, we'll be down to 12.5%. What does that need to be?
I like it, I like to maintain about 15%, and that's because that's around two months of operating expenses.
Okay.
That's the money we need to pay the bills in between receiving revenues, because some of our revenues only come in quarterly, like property tax. So in between that time, we pay bills. Anywhere from 10 to 15% works. Once we get below 10%, it starts to become a little challenging.
Yeah.
Because there may be times where we have to hold invoices the full 30 days. We can't pay them as soon as we receive them. So it takes more management once we start to reduce some of that.
Okay. Another question real quick is, oh, I'm looking through my notes, hold on. Oh, is there any way we could do any kind of fees on marijuana to?
We get marijuana revenue currently. It's 3% of gross.
Okay.
We are looking at some avenues to maybe do some auditing of those fees. So we are exploring a space to where maybe we do some audits to ensure that it, the proper collection. But that's a challenging space, but we are looking at that.
Okay.
Councilmember Reese has his hand up, I think, and then we're going to move on.
Thank you. My comments will be brief. I just wanted to sort of share my thoughts on Ms. Doer's comments about the boards and commissions. I agree with her in principle that the boards and commissions and all of them, quite frankly, are very important. It's one of the ways in which we communicate most directly with folks. But I do think that it's, for me, the choice between like, you know, laying off four police officers or holding all of these various boards and commissions. If that's the choice I'm required to take, I'm going to keep our public safety officers employed. And so for my part, I think, you know, maybe what I need to understand, if that is really the direction that city manager's office wants to go, is what the cost of continuing those boards and commissions is, whether or not there are some that could still exist in their exact form that they are today, and others that could be paused. I think it's a pause for me. It's not a eliminate or cut anything. I also think that perhaps the NABS could be done quarterly, and then maybe greater communication within the NABS or in the neighborhoods through the newsletter could be part of the issue that could be done to fill the gap in that period of time. But again, for my part, I sort of need the financial piece to understand, because some of our boards and commissions, I think, for example, access advisory gets funds allocated to it. I even think that U City Council and senior citizens get funds allocated specifically to them. So in pausing any of that, I would, I would think that that would include the funds that are directed at those specific subboards. And again, I think if Ms. Doer is holding NABS that go three and four hours, that means that our staff are there and working overtime, right, for three and four hours in the evening. And this is what starts to concern me. And part of it is, I have not had a NAB up until recently, and so I don't have the same experience with it. But I do think there's worth our opportunity cost to put a pause in it, understand the finances of it. It's not going to close that 3.4, but we're going to start having to make very small adjustments to make up for the large adjustments to make up for the larger number.
City Manager Bryant, did you want to add something?
Yeah, I do. Thank you very much for the opportunity. I do have some data. Each NAB costs roughly $11,000 a year. The majority of that is staff time. As you know, we are very low on our liaisons right now, and so it really is going to be a decision around priorities as to where do we want to spend the little resources that we have and how are we going to prioritize them. So thank you for your feedback in that regard.
Okay. Vicki, let's move on. Councilmembers, we are going to take a lunch break because we have some people with a hard stop, so please, I think lunch is back there. Go in, get lunch, make sure we have a quorum. Thank you, Vicki.
Madam Mayor, are we going to, I had one more follow-up, so it's very brief. If I could keep it to one minute.
Sure, sure. Sorry, I didn't see your hand. Yes.
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to be clear when I spoke about the NABS. I am very open to taking a very hard look at all our boards and commissions, including ones I serve on, whether it's urban forestry, I'm not on arts and culture, but any of them. I totally support that. What I was saying, and I want to be clear, when the projects come in, this is the moment they quickly go to Planning Commission. If we only have the meetings quarterly, there's not enough time. I mean, many, many projects will go right to Planning Commission without any input from the NAB unless we're going to also reduce the Planning Commission, and I don't know if we can do that statutorily. So this is just Naomi Dewar's perspective, and I am, it also has to do, Councilmember Reese, with a reflection of the times we're in and how important it has been for our publics to be able to access their elected officials in some kind of regularized manner. And so there's, sometimes there's things that go beyond. And I'll just say, sadly, our liaisons are much lower on a pay scale than, let's say, a firefighter or a police officer all in, in terms of all of the things that go along with that. So it's just, that's why I recommended that our manager look at money as well as just comparing positions. So it's not a definite, and maybe they could be reduced to, if not quarterly, I mean, bi-monthly if that works, but we have to just take a hard look at it in relation to the timing of the Planning Commission and when that information needs to get there. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Dewar. I see, Madam Mayor, your hand is raised, and I don't believe you've even had one round.
Yeah, just really quickly. I shared Naomi's sentiments about NABS. I think it's really important to get that feedback, and it really does build community. I want to say that now with technology, with AI and things like that, we have to be sensitive to the staff time. There are programs out there that will transcribe meetings and things like that, so we should look at some of those ways that we can sort of maybe hit those pain points with alleviating some staff and look at technology in that way. You know, set up council members with some technology tools that can do that, because you can really streamline now with AI assistants and AI technology. Like I said, they can transcribe everything, and, you know, the council member could bring it back, you know, and then sort of download it. There's a lot of ways to really streamline that and to look at ways how we can utilize our staff time better with more efficiencies. So something to look into. I'll, I'll start researching, but I know other cities are using it, particularly, you know, when you are seeing those long staff times go over, and I, and I believe they fall into overtime as well. Maybe someone can correct me on that.
You're correct.
Yeah, that's, it's, it's very tricky. I get it for sure. But those are really ways that we can look at being efficient.
And I'll just mention throughout COVID, we used fully electronic meetings, and I'm totally fine with that, where a staff person doesn't even need to be involved. We just plus record on the, on the Zoom meetings. So just some ideas.
Thank you. Special Revenue Funds, Vicki.
Okay. I have one last thing I want to say here on this slide before we move forward, just to remind you. I know we're working on fiscal year '26, but we always look out, working for the future and what this looks like. And so Lindsay works with the program, and Spencer works with our projection program for salary and benefits, and they built in the models, modeling out what we know for some of the contracts that still have COLAs and things in the future, and so we've modeled some of that out. And based on that, what we're looking at for fiscal year '27, given, you know, generally flat revenues, we're going to be around in the same space for '27 with no additions for the general fund. So we're looking at right around that $24, $25 million gap again for next year, because any of the small growth that we'll have in some of the areas isn't enough for the growth that we're having in salary and benefits, and property tax isn't enough to start breaching and closing this gap. So that gap's still going to continue at about the same level as we move forward without changes to revenue sources or changes in other ways. So I just want to make it clear that we are looking to the future, and we will be advising on that as well as we start to really build this out. So special revenue funds, I'm going to highlight these really high level at this point. Again, this is the overall look at all of our special revenue funds that we have, $73 million in total, including the ending fund balance on this slide for purposes of this one, because these are total amounts in the funds. The largest ones in here are the street fund, well, the largest one is the street fund. It has dedicated revenue sources from property tax and from gas tax. The other one, so I'm going to outline that one separately, and the other one is room tax, and we're going to talk about that one a little more in detail as well, as U.S. Council have a portion of that that you allocate each year. The other ones are all dedicated, so special revenue funds just really means that it's restricted by law or a policy for a particular purpose. That means the revenue coming into these is restricted on what it can be used for, and that's why these are tracked separately. And so these are easier for us to balance, because obviously these are dedicated funding sources for these specific purposes, and we don't spend as much time talking about them, but I will highlight that really the larger ones. And the street fund, again, it is a special revenue fund. About 71% of the revenues coming into here are from property tax, and that is dedicated to the street fund from property tax. We have fuel tax in there of about 19% as well, and those two make up the main sources of revenues coming into the street fund. The biggest programs you're going to have in street funds you'll see over on the right-hand side are in capital projects, and those are the neighborhood street funds, where they're working those neighborhood projects to renew those streets in those areas. So those are capital projects that vary from year to year depending on the schedule that Public Works has lined out, and that's what we build in here. You also have traffic and engineering. You have pavement maintenance, and the snow removal is from this fund. We also have, as we move forward, you'll see some things on here called indirect cost. And so indirect cost, we charge these funds for these services that are governmental oversight in general that these funds use. So for example, Finance Department, we still manage the funds and track these funds and report on them budget-wise and spend time on it. So we allocate a portion of our cost to the street fund to cover that. So we're charging the street fund for those services. The same thing happens with IT, human resources, city manager, any of these things that kind of touch these areas. We do an indirect cost study every year. It's based on actual amounts, so it's based on last year's ACFOR, the Annual Financial Report, the 24 that was just approved, and then the cost study is based on that. So really, it runs like two years behind, because we base it on actuals, but it's for next year, so it's kind of two years behind. But you will see that in all of these funds, because we're going to charge, we're paid out of the general fund, but then we charge these funds for that portion that's related to them. We look at the street fund history. This shows a history back to 2017. You'll see it looks kind of smooth as you go through the actuals, because it smoothes out mostly because of the capital outlay. Those capital projects are very large, anywhere from $10 to $20 million a year, depending on the year and the streets that they're doing and renewing. And so we budget for that project in the year that it comes before you for approval, but that project may actually take several years to complete. So you'll see that smoothing effect, and then it looks like, you know, we're going to spend a lot in this year. Well, most likely, we're estimating to spend it, but most likely, a lot of that will be carried forward and overlap year to year as we move forward. Now, room tax, I want to skip to the next slide on this one, and this is a stopping point, because these are the only two that I was going to talk about here in special revenue funds. Room tax, Councilmember Eber brought this up earlier, talking about, well, is there capacity in here to do some things? Well, room tax really has not increased since I've been with the city five, well, I know it hasn't increased in five years, and it hasn't increased since I've been with the city eight years. The reasons for that is room taxes are based on a percentage of the room rate, and so it's 1% of the room rate. What's happened is we've lost some of the rooms in downtown. Some of the hotels have closed, so we don't have as many rooms for the charges. And then the other piece of it, the rooms themselves have gone up in price. So although we've lost rooms, the prices have gone up, so it still remains very flat. So we just haven't had a lot of growth in that space. What we do see in this space, and this slide shows that, is that we do see fluctuations based on month. So depending on the month and based on tourism, it has a very steady trend year over year, except for the COVID years. You'll see the 2020, that's that big dip, and then 2021, as things were coming back. And then after that, it just stays, and even month to month, it trends very evenly. You'll see some spikes in there, and those spikes are during the years of the bowling, when the bowling tournaments come in town. You will see a spike that occurs in those years. But outside of that, it just trends very steady. So what does that mean? It really means that it's anywhere from $3 million to $3.2 million every single year, about the same amount. Doesn't grow. We continue to budget it right at that amount, because that's where it has stayed. This is shared revenue between council and parks is the way it's set up. It's 50/50. So it's, those revenues are split between the council portion and the Parks and Rec portion. For Parks and Rec, it's for parks maintenance and parks items. And then on the council portion, this is the portion where you'll see the Lear Theater debt payment that council has approved. You'll also see special events, staff support, where council wanted to support special events, special event donations, that's on your list here, arts commission. These are all spaces that are within the council's budget. So if you look at this chart, it's, it's broken down by council priority, first of all. Where does it meet your priority? And then, second, it's broken down by who's paying for it. And really, the only space in here that's the parks piece of it is that parks maintenance on that very first little blue box, and then a portion is coming from council as well. We've built this out based on what council has approved in the past. There's not really any new funds here, so we've just kind of built it based on what you've wanted to see in the past and put it on here. The only things that are really required on here are the split. You have to do the split, so you only get half of it, and then the other half goes to parks maintenance. And then the other thing, Lear Theater, we have to make that debt payment, and then risk premiums and indirect costs, those are, again, for those costs of managing this fund and doing those things. But outside of that, if there are spaces in here that you want to talk about or look at doing differently, that is a space that is available to you. So I'm going to stop here, even though the stop's on the next slide, but I thought it flowed better.
Madam Mayor, your hand is raised. Did you have a question?
Yeah, just, I just want to put something out there, because we've never had a conversation on it, but it should be something that actually I think that we might want to explore. And we have a few properties that are very, very challenging, like the Ballroom, the Event Center, the Bowling Stadium. I think it's something that we should put on for discussion when it comes to looking at what those properties are valued at and if there is any appetite for maybe, you know, looking at a sale of those properties. And then also, I don't remember what the, what the clear path was for the Lear Theater and getting someone, you know, to come into that space. So not saying to sell the Lear Theater, because I think, you know, that was the goal, is to keep historically something in place that is really a gem. But I am saying the other properties should be looked at, I think, in a broader picture. And that can be under, you know, redevelopment agency, maybe have the RAB Board even dig into something like that. But those properties have been very challenging for a long time. And, you know, when we're talking about budgets at this magnitude, I think, you know, when we talk about things that are problematic, this might be one where we should dive into it a little bit more. So thanks so much.
Councilmember Dewar?
Yes, thank you. I want to support what the mayor just said, that, you know, I thought we just had the presentation, I believe it was on the Ballroom, and maybe it is time to, you know, lean on those public-private partnerships and see if the casinos or consortium of casinos would like to take that over. I mean, we just went over the details. I don't want to go over it here again. But I also had a question. Were you saying, Vicki, that the parks was fixed, like that's for sure for parks? Or were you saying we should look at that, too? I was unclear.
No, this, this, as it's dedicated, it is half, this money that comes in of that $3 million, it's split half between parks and half council, and that's the way the resolution is set up, and that's what has gone forward.
Right. I didn't know, though, I mean, we adopted a resolution, not this council, not the previous council, but a council before, earlier council. Is that amenable to amendments?
I would have to defer to legal on that one.
I mean, that's a resolution, right? Jonathan or Carl?
I think it's actually part of an ordinance, too, because I think it was an ordinance, and then it's been amended with resolutions. It's been amended a few times.
Okay. But you're just saying we could take a fresh look at how that money is distributed?
I think for purposes of this, and given the budget deficit that we're in, we really need to look at things, other things on this list, because really, the parks maintenance that's on this list is supporting the general fund. That money is going directly from this fund, Room Tax, to support the general fund, park maintenance.
But the other is not?
The other funds that are on here are going somewhere else, and those are opportunities to do something else with them. I do want to say that special events and the special events donations, those also are going to the general fund to support the special events programs in there. So those three boxes, those first three boxes that you see there are all already going to the general fund, so if you wanted to do something different, that's going to increase the deficit. Other boxes, potential.
Okay. And just a word about the Lear Theater. I understand there's a bill pending, I think this came up at council last time, to potentially bring in $12 million for the Lear. That's one of the things I think that we're holding on. But regardless if it's $12 million, or $10 million, or $2 million, or $1 million, or zero, whatever it is, we'll just have to wait and see. It will require some kind of match, so we'll have to play that by ear and see if we can get grants to offset that. But just to let you know, just to reiterate, that's out there. So I wouldn't want to do anything too premature until we understand the scenarios that are being considered there. But I am up for re, taking a close look at this fund and reallocating. How much did you say it is altogether, the second half, the other 50%?
It's approximately...
Is it 3.2 or 1.7?
Approximately $1 million between all of the other things, as I'm looking at it here.
About $1 million? Okay, thank you.
Are there councilmembers' questions?
I just have one question, and it might be for the mayor, actually. Madam Mayor, I know that C. Tax is down right now largely because we don't have bowlers. Oh, she's not here. Does anybody know when the bowlers are coming back?
Next year.
Next year? Okay, that's good.
And I do, correction, it's, it's about half a million, because already about, four, five, six, about $900,000 of what you see here of the council's portion of that one and a half million is already going to the general fund, so you're looking at about half a million in other things that are listed on here that potentially could be reallocated.
Let me ask, to finish my question, you said...
Councilmember Dewar, do you mind if I ask a question, please? So with what you just said, it goes to the council, it goes to the general fund, so 1.5 million of stuff goes to the general fund. But if we said we don't want to do special event support, or if we don't want to do special event donations, that would come out of the general fund, right? So we would have to eliminate the program. We don't get to just eliminate, take the money.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Dewar?
Yeah, well, just to finish your thought, too. Do we, so we need to cut something, but we could... Do we, so we need to cut something, but we could, like, reappropriate money that we're putting for art grants for one year, for example. Is that what you're saying? Like, you have 253,000 to Arts Commission.
Yes, I mean, you could choose to do something else with that one, or reduce it some. You could make some other changes, because Arts Commission right now, that is one that you've continued to fund annually every year. So we built it in here. If you wanted to reduce that funding, like Councilmember Reese was talking about, maybe some of the commissions and some of the other things, where you reduce some funding to them in the interim, that potentially could be a space.
Yeah. I mean, I don't love it, but I understand the need for it. And I think a one-year hold, or even just a reduction, just not the full amount, but a reduction, could be, you know, could be very helpful. So thank you.
Councilmember Martinez.
Thanks so much. Just a quick question for the downtown street lighting sternberg replacement. Is that something that's been continuously approved and spent? And is that, like, the same amount every single year? It just seems, I don't know how much lights cost, but it seems like a lot for replacement of streetlights.
Yes, this amount has been spent every year since I've been here, even a little bit more, depending on how many they're doing. I can't equate it to maybe, someone knows how many lights that is, but it's part of a replacement program. And so it's obviously not doing everything all at once. It's just a continued upgrade and replacement program, if you want to speak to it.
Kierikowski, Director of Public Works. Oftentimes, we get knockdowns, so there are mostly replacements for that. We have had some turnover because of some deterioration and that sort of thing. But typically, we use that amount. Those sternburgers are very expensive.
Okay, thank you.
Before you go on, I'm just, I appreciate the creativity of looking at things like this, but we are still looking at maybe a half a million dollars when we're needing 24 million. And like you said, every dollar helps. So thank you for bringing us everything.
Enterprise funds?
Ready to move on.
I had my hand raised.
Councilmember Eber.
Thank you. I know we kind of passed it, but I didn't get to ask, is it possible to look into using volunteer groups like SAVE to do parking enforcement, so that it's not a cost to us? I know that there's some legal guidelines and things like that, but can we pursue a way to find that enforcement and revenue without increasing our costs for employee benefits and salaries?
Actually, Attorney Assistant City Manager, for the record, we currently utilize SAVE to issue handicap parking tickets on private property, as that is the only allowable space they're allowed to do enforcement per state law.
Okay.
So we can do that. We would just need to engage the state legislature to change the chapter under law enforcement in order to allow them to have the authority to do that.
Okay. Okay, and I wanted to also talk about the NABS really quick. I know that we're trying to cut funds, but $11,000 a year for all the NABS is kind of like a drop in the bucket. And I know that they're really important for me, for my community, because we are one of the areas that's having a significant amount of development. I just can't stress enough how important it is for me to have that monthly meeting, to engage with the community and inform them, and also have them give feedback to developers. I've seen changes between the NAB and council meetings, and I think that's wonderful. It makes it better for everyone. So I don't know if we pursue things like that. Maybe it can be an optional per council member. You want to have it quarterly, you want to have it monthly, kind of give it to us for our own discretion.
If I could add some conversation around that and answer some of your points there. To clarify, the cost of NABS annually is $68,000 total. That does not include the staff time that's associated with all of the salaries, indirect costs. Those are hard costs. So that is room rental cost, these are direct overtime costs. That does not include the near $20,000 that we were previously paying in overtime for planning staff to attend. So we've already made that cut in order to try to save, but that would have pushed us over the $80,000 limit. Again, that may not seem like a significant amount. We do appreciate public engagement. We think that's incredibly important, and we always encourage everyone to be able to give their thoughts to council through this body, planning commission meetings, online public comment forums. Where we look at, to put in perspective, I think we've used park maintenance workers as an option. That is more than one parks maintenance worker makes, including their stacked benefits sometimes. So we are always open to whatever the council would like to do, but wanted to clarify some of those points.
Okay. Would it be possible for council members to get training so they can do it? I know there's a lot of equipment and stuff, but maybe that could be a way to help with costs, too, because we're not going to get overtime. Is that something that we could pursue at our own discretion?
If the attorneys are comfortable with you managing the open meeting law process, as well as the, the bulk of the time is not only the three or four or five hours that are associated with the actual meeting. There's generally, on average, each NAB takes a liaison approximately 31 to 32 hours per month to manage and plan each NAB, so times six. And again, that doesn't include all of the other staff time that goes into it. So we're happy to teach you, and if the attorneys are comfortable with you taking over the open meeting law, that would reduce some of the staff time associated with it. The bulk of it is the planning and management from record-keeping and ensuring that we've got...
Okay, so it's not the time spent at the NAB, the overtime spent there?
It's some of it. That's one portion of the larger, but we're happy to take on additional help if council thinks that's the appropriate path.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Van Puren, I think we were in between the next set of slide options, right?
We are at a stop here, so the next one would be enterprise funds.
Yeah, enterprise funds. We'll take that up.
So enterprise funds, we have two with the city. We have the building fund, and we have the sewer fund. The sewer fund, we're not going to talk about that one today. The sewer fund, John Plansberg is going to come forward on March 26 with an item specific to the sewer fund and discuss the sewer rate study that was done. That's updated every two years. And so that was recently done. He's been working very hard, his staff as well, on that. And so there's some decision points around that, and so we're going to wait for further direction from that meeting to continue to build that budget. But we've built it, you know, substantially at this point, based on what we know. And after further direction at that point, we'll follow on with following meetings with that direction from the March 26 meeting. We will be talking about building fund today. So as we move into building fund, just at a high level, for building fund, it is an enterprise fund. And by an enterprise fund, what it means when we talk about that, it means we treat it kind of like a business. The intent is that the costs of doing the service are recovered by the users of the service. So people using it should be paying for it, just like if it was a business, and that's really what qualifies it as an enterprise fund. In the building fund, 98% of the revenues from coming into that fund are for charges for services. That includes building permits, plan check fees, plumbing, electrical inspections, fire inspections, all of those things that the building department does as far as building fund-type activities. On the expenditure side, about 60% is on the building permits. And then again, you'll see that indirect cost item on here as well, because we're going to charge that fund for the expenditures of the general government that oversee a lot of the same functions that they use. We have our retiree insurance, OPEB pension, depreciation is on here, because we do have to budget for that as an expense. It's not a cash expense, but it's an accounting expense. So this in general is the building fund. The building fund did undergo a realignment of those positions, and we've talked about that previously. And so you'll see on the next slide, you'll see the decrease in the salary and benefits from the current year estimated to next year's projected. And that's due to that realignment of those positions and ensuring that the people doing the work are actually doing building work versus sewer work versus the other kinds of work. And that was done across the board, citywide, to realign the positions correctly. And so I have another stopping point here, because this is just the end of the building fund portion of this, in case there are specific questions on this one.
I think we're good to proceed. I don't see any questions.
Okay, perfect. We will move on into internal service funds. So these operate very similar. We call them proprietary funds, which we call the sewer and the building funds proprietary as well, meaning someone does a service and someone pays a fee for it. And so these are a little separate in that these services are provided by a department, and then the other departments in the city pay into it to receive this service. So in this case, it's fleet, so they service all of the vehicles that we have and the replacement of those vehicles. There's the risk fund, so that includes city attorney's office plus insurance costs for insuring buildings and other such items. Then we have self-funded medical, we're self-funded for medical, and then workers' comp. So when you look at these funds, all of, and just think about all these departments that we have people in and using these services, they pay in to fund these. We collect what we need in order to fund these. And so this is just giving you a breakdown of each of those. I'm going to start with workers' comp and risk first, really, because workers' comp, it's mostly claims. We collect what we need to pay those claims for workers' comp in the expenditures. And then in the risk fund, it's kind of split between claims and then the insurance premium. So insurance premiums are the bigger piece of it, and then claims are a small piece of it there. So again, and there are some salary and benefits that are dedicated to some of these funds, because we do have a risk manager and a risk program now. And so a few years ago, we didn't actually have that. It was kind of done by certain departments. But as we've expanded, council has, those are areas where council thought that we should have real, more oversight as far as workers' comp and risk. Self-funded medical is doing really well. We have not had an across-the-board rate increase in premiums to the employees across the board since 2017. So, and that, at that time, was 5% across the board. We haven't, it's managed really well, even though costs, we know, have gone up in the medical space as far as claims. It's still managed very well as far as those funds. We are finally at a point where we're looking at, because of the costs of healthcare and the cost of claims, we are at a point where we're looking at having to look at some increases there. And so we are anticipating that we'll probably need an increase in January of '26. So it would be implemented half-year in the budget build that we're actually looking at here. But we are working with HR on that. We're working with our broker and the insurance to really see those projections, and with the Health Benefits Committee to see what that looks like as it rolls out. But it wouldn't be until after the, after it goes out for that next review on the next year, so the open enrollment period in the fall. And so it would be effective January if that's, if that goes into effect. And we're looking at, based on what we have for projections, about 10%. So overall, I think that's a really good program. Haven't seen an increase in nine years. I mean, that's pretty phenomenal, given the costs of medical that have gone up all these years. Going back to the fleet fund, I held this one for last, because this one is included in some of the allocation reductions that were mentioned earlier. So you'll notice on here, salary and benefits are about 42% of the cost in the fleet fund. That's to maintain the vehicles, do the regular maintenance, repairs, and other things. Fuel accounts for over a quarter of their budget. And then parts and repairs, parts that they use, and then some of the things they might have to outsource for repairs, too, depending on what it is. They do have some occasional need to do that. The capital space is kind of highlighted there, because normally, they would have a capital replacement program for replacing vehicles. And this is where I mentioned previously, there's 400,000 budgeted just for, an accident occurs, a, you know, engine blows up, whatever. That would be the only replacement that's budgeted here. So that fund has been reduced. The other funds on this slide, the other three, are funded at the same levels as we've previously funded. No increases in funding. So I'm going to stop there. And this is the end of my part of the presentation, and then it will transition into the Fee Schedule, another very large document. So I'm trying to break it up into manageable pieces as we do these workshops. So are there questions here?
Questions? Councilmember Eber.
I do have a question. I don't, can you explain to me why our self-funded plans have been doing fine since 2017? There's no increases there. So how, how do we justify the increase in premium costs, then?
The cost of medical insurance has continually gone up every year. But since we're self-funded, it's just going to depend on the claims that come in. We pay the claims as they come in. And so, you know, you may have some, one individual that doesn't use anything one year, but then you may have someone else who has a lot of medical issues and uses more. So it does fluctuate based on usage.
Okay.
And so it's remained very healthy over the years. The fact that we haven't had to increase it and it's maintained is phenomenal, in my opinion, because, I mean, that's nine years of no increases on health insurance. I don't know another organization that has done that.
Okay. Yeah, I just didn't understand how that could happen, but we also need to increase premiums at the same time. That, you know, we haven't, you know, had an increase, but now we're going to increase.
Right, because the costs have gone up for medical.
Okay, all right. I don't think I have anything else right now.
Are there councilmembers? I don't see any. Thank you so much for your presentation.
I'm going to introduce Lindsay. She's going to be up next for the Fee Schedule.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Lindsay Hatfield, Budget Manager, for the record. I'm going to discuss some of the changes to the Fee Schedule this year, what we're proposing for updates here. So as part of the budget process, every year, we do this in conjunction with budget adoption. So we go through the Fee Schedule with the departments. We have them look at the Fee Schedule line by line, evaluate whether these fees match with the effort that's going out for them. Are they covering the costs of, you know, materials and staff time? If that is what council's determined for those particular fees, there are some departments that their cost recovery model is not 100%. So for parks, for example, we're not necessarily looking for them to recover dollar-for-dollar what we spend on parks, so that the, those services and facilities can still be available for the public, so they're subsidized a bit. But all of that is analyzed in detail. Most fees on the schedule are increased by CPI every year. We have a little table over on the side there that kind of shows you the history of that CPI increase that we've done. Not all fees are adjusted by that amount, because some are dictated by NRS, or maybe they're established as a pass-through fee. So, for example, in police, for background fees, we're kind of passing through that FBI fee, so we're not really setting that. We're just charging what we're having to pay. And so we go through that whole process with the departments, and then finance reviews that and compiles it into a summary for council. We have attached to your agenda item today, there is the full proposed Fee Schedule is included there. In that proposed schedule, we have two columns added in there. We have a dollar difference and then a percent difference. So you can see from the current year adopted fee to what is being proposed, what is that change. Any fees that were adjusted, let me go onto this side, any fees that were adjusted higher than CPI or that are new, we have highlighted very clearly bright yellow in there, so that it really calls your attention to it. And you can see, see what's being updated and what the departments are proposing there. We also ask them at that time to try to consolidate. We have a really big Fee Schedule. It can be cumbersome sometimes for the public and staff to navigate, so we ask every year that the departments look at that. Is there anything that can be consolidated and simplified? That's really the goal, is to try to simplify it and make it easy for the public to understand. I don't think I mentioned, but CPI for this year is 2.5%. So that is the amount that we added to the bulk of the fees. There's a slight change this year in methodology for rounding, so I wanted to call that out for the council, so you understand what you may be seeing in that percent difference column. So all of the departments, they may have varying goals there for how they want that fee to end up. want that fee to end up. Maybe they want to round it to the nearest dollar, maybe it's the nearest quarter. Parks is typically done the nearest quarter because they do a lot of cash handling, so it makes sense. Some departments are to the penny, depending on, on what the actual fee is. So in the past, when we've applied that CPI increase, departments have always rounded down. So if they had a fee that was $3.76, they would round it down to $3.50 if their, if their goal was to hit the 50 cent mark for all of their fees. This year, departments did look at that, and they decided to just, most of them, to round to the nearest. So whether that was up or down, whatever was the nearest. So if they calculated that fee and it came out to, to $3.97, they may have rounded up to $4. So when you're looking through that proposed document that we have attached, if you see percent increases that are not highlighted, those are all CPI that were just rounded up to the nearest dollar or quarter or whatever the case may be. There are some new fees being proposed and some greater-than-CPI increases to adjust those fees to the service levels being provided. I'm going to call those out for you, other than a few departments specifically. So we do have Public Works, Parks and Recreation, and Development Services. Those three departments had some significant changes, either to their calculations, the way something is calculated, or some big structural changes. So we thought it best that they come up and, and discuss those as the subject matter experts. So I won't, I won't talk about those three departments, their new fees, or greater-than-CPI increases, but we'll have them come up and speak to those directly. Some of the notable changes this year for the building fire schedule, they have 10 fees on that schedule that it looks like they're, they're increasing above CPI. That is to align with the building's schedule, so they just want to get those fees to match over there, so we don't kind of have two similar fees in different spaces or we're charging different amounts. That can be very confusing. So that's just to align, align those fees with, with what's on the building's schedule. In the enforcement schedule, our electric vehicle charging, so historically, we've only had the Level 2 chargers for electric vehicles, and so we were charging a per hour. We've now installed some Level 3, and it is a much bigger pull when, when you're using these fast charging stations rather than, than the slower. So they kind of, they want to move that fee from a per-hour charge to a per-kilowatt-hour charge, so it doesn't matter what level you're using, you're paying for the energy consumption the same way that we're paying for it. So that's just kind of an alignment between what we're having to pay, so that we, we aren't taking on a bigger burden of that cost just for having these charging stations Maintenance and Operations went through a complete analysis of their signal maintenance program, and they are requesting to align those fees better with the staff and material costs of maintaining those signals. They did have one that went down, and then two that went up, just to try to make sure that we're recovering the cost for, for providing that service. Municipal Court has two fees that are increasing higher than CPI. The sealing of record fee, when this was initially implemented and the costs that we're charging for this, each record, they, people had to pay individually to have each record sealed. Now they can have multiple records sealed at the same time, and so that's a lot more work for staff, so they kind of want to do an adjustment there to better reflect the work that's going into that process. And then similar for the supervision fee, that, the scope that they're providing for that has really increased a lot over the, over the years. And they also have not increased any of their fees in around 15 years. So these are the only two that they're proposing, otherwise the, those are just staying the same. The final change on here that was kind of above CPI is in utility services for their pre-treatment wastewater discharge permits. It's only for the hazard class 3 through 5s. And they looked at the cost, what Sparks is charging for that, and they believe that what they've proposed here is better in line with, with what our regional, regional partners are doing there. So some of the new fees that, that are proposed in this schedule, I know council had a lot of discussion at the last meeting over the inspection late fee for fire, so that will be in the next draft that you get. We have, we have noted that feedback. And then the, the next three for fire, these are all special event-related, so they have an overtime rate for, for those inspections, and then a permit fee, and then a permit application fee. These, these would be new. For police, they are proposing a $40 charge for the no loitering sign that businesses can request. This is just to recover the cost of providing that sign. And then for special events, there is not a cost included with this. It is noted in the schedule as actual cost, so they are proposing to add it into the Fee Schedule, so that when city staff does the furniture setup and strike for events that happen in the plaza, that we could actually charge for that staff time afterwards. And then that's all I have, and I'll, if you have any questions, we can talk about that, and then I'll have the other departments come up and give their detail on their slides.
Councilmember Reese?
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. It was excellent. Let me ask, because it is not something I had previously looked at or talked about in the briefings, related to the sealing of records fee. Tell me what you're trying to do there, or what is the proposal?
The proposal is to increase that fee. I believe it's currently, let me double-check in my... So it's currently $100, and they're proposing to change that to $150. There, when people request these sealing of records, now it's not just a single record. Initially, that $100 charge would be per record. Now they can request, you know, five, and it's all in that one fee. So they're having to do a lot more work to, to process those.
So previously, they would have had to pay five individual $100 fees for five different ceilings? Now you're just saying you want them to pay for all five with $150?
That is my understanding, yes. They, they now can do multiple, and that is already in place, so they're still paying the $100, whether they ask for one or five.
I see. I, I am just a little hesitant because I think we are at this point in our trajectory largely around helping people to overcome their historical paths by sealing records. When people are sealing records, they're usually doing it for a good reason, meaning maybe they had something in their past that they're not very proud of. It happened, they've now rebuilt their life, and they're trying to go out and get a job. And to seal the records is a step in that direction, which then helps them to go do the things that, you know, we hope they might do. So I'm just a little worried about that. So I'll have to think about it a little bit more. Thank you for flagging it, though.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Ebert?
Yeah, thank you. Just to make sure I'm understanding correctly, we do not currently charge for the signs for the new loitering signs?
That is my understanding.
I can take that while Chief Nance comes to the podium. We don't currently have a no-loitering sign. When council passed the law a few weeks ago that authorized it, now there is a whole process that Chief Nance can go into that explains why we would need to charge for the sign.
Great, thanks.
We need to add this into the, Chief Nance, for the record, we need to add this into the Fee Schedule, so we can continue to charge for the signs. We are just now at the place where we're getting ready to start releasing those signs. And so that gives us the ability to add this into the Fee Schedule.
Okay, great. Yeah, I was, I couldn't remember if we were doing them for free, but we should absolutely charge for the signs themselves. And do, does City of Reno staff install the signs?
No, the business owner is responsible for charging the signs, and the $40 is the cost of making the signs.
Okay. So if they wanted like five signs for their property, they're going to pay $40 per sign, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then they just have to put it up on their own?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have any requirements for putting them up correctly? Like, would there be a fine or something if, if somebody put one up where they weren't supposed to, or didn't pay for the fee and got one from somebody else? Is there, would there be any kind of enforcement at all on that, or a fee if somebody's caught doing that?
The placement of the signs would be covered under code. We can help advise people where to place signs if they have any questions or concerns about it. If they have a sign, but they're not signed up for the program because they acquired one from some random place, we wouldn't be able to do enforcement there.
Okay, so they would just have the sign, and that's it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
I think we're moving on.
No more questions? Okay. In that case, Public Works?
Khalil Wilson, Assistant Director, Public Works, for the record. I'm here to talk to you about the National Pollutants Discharge Elimination Systems Fee. So the purpose of this fee is to cover site inspections for costs for the federally mandated municipal separated storm sewer systems permit. Now, it's a mouthful, it's more commonly known as the MS-4 permit. It's important to note that this fee is not new. This fee currently exists in the Development Services Department. Removing the fee from the Development Services Department to Public Works because it's Public Works staff that does the inspection, the required inspection work. So this is the current Fee Schedule as it exists today. On the right-hand side there, you can see those are base fees, and they vary based on project duration and other site conditions. And then this fee is then calculated by the disturbed acres. We have found that this variable schedule of the base fees is challenging for staff to calculate, as well as very difficult for the permittee to understand. In addition, when fees are issued, the timelines for the varying timelines makes it difficult to track expiring permits during construction. So what are we looking to change? So we're looking to simplify and make it one fee, $200 per, per acre, per year. And then this calculation is easier to understand, and it's more efficient for the Public Works to administer. And what, most importantly, it's easier for us to track expiring permits during construction. And lastly, this will become more in alignment with the neighboring agencies, the fee, more in alignment. All right, answer any questions you may have.
Councilmember Ebert?
Yeah. So with the enforcement of this, will there be people on City of Reno staff proactively checking these sites, or will it be, you know, contingent on somebody reporting them to Reno Direct?
No, thank you for the question. So it is, it is City of Reno staff. We're required to do at, at minimum a monthly inspection, but we will respond if, more often if, if needed, out to, out to decide.
Okay, so it will be every?
Hundred, yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
I don't see any other questions. Madam Clerk, can we just take a quick vote?
I did have one more thing, real quick.
Okay, go ahead.
Is there any, like, late fees assessed on these two? Like, if we issue a citation and they don't pay it within a certain timeframe?
There are fines that are associated with the MS-4 permit, but we work with our, our contract community, you know, and certainly when it comes to the expiration of the permit, we have timelines that we say the permit's going to expire, please come in and renew, renew.
Okay, okay, so no, no fees for not complying outside of just those?
The ones for the MS-4 permit, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Madam Clerk, can we just take a quick vote if I need to step out to have somebody run the meeting?
Yes, if we could just take, if I can get a motion to appoint an interim presiding officer when Vice Mayor Taylor steps out, as Mayor Sheevy is not online.
Can I motion to appoint Councilmember Reese?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm optimistic. All right. Mayor and Council, Nathan Olliet, Parks and Recreation Director, for the record. Just want to give you a quick explanation of some of our fee changes and adds. In general, our, our changes have been to help consolidate many, many lines in our part of the Fee Schedule. Generally, that's around some of our reservable spaces. In the past, many of our reservable spaces were lined out individually, even though they were very similar to other reservable spaces. So, so just going through from the top of this slide, our field prep and touch-up, there's an increase there. Important to note that this is primarily for our tournament reservations. This isn't affecting youth sports or anything we have with RYSA. This is for tournaments that use our fields, charge quite a bit of money for teams to participate, and so we're just bumping those up $5. And then we have created a scale for the touch-up side, where if we need to come in and do multiple touch-ups and that goes into overtime, we're better accounting for some of those costs. And then the other part is our staffing costs for if, if it's required for them to pay for staff during an off-hours. If, for instance, if they're in a facility late at night or on the weekend when it's not open, they would pay a staffing cost. If the facility's open, they would not pay that cost. So that's going up $5 to just sort of keep up with, with those things, and generally that's overtime if it's occurring. We're, we're scheduling a small increase for the Rec Connect membership, $1 to $2 per membership. That would be effective January 1st to kind of stay in line with what people would expect to see in the fitness industry. So that's, that'll be coming in January, even though it'll be a possibility for the July approval, but we wanted to get that in ahead of time. And there you see the range increases for, you know, a good example at the bottom there, the gym rentals on that third bullet. Most of our gyms are very similar in size, yet we had different prices or a separate listing line on the, the Fee Schedule, so we just consolidated that and created a range. Another part of these changes is to create peak and off-peak usage, so during the weeks are not our busy times, but if we can, we can book that, we want to, and we want to make it more attractive to book during those times. A, we're already open, and B, there's more availability and doesn't conflict with our evening and weekend rentals. Then there's some adjustments. You can see on the package rate consistency, our wedding package was different from McKinley to California Building, so we tried to line those up as well. Some new fees we've added, we didn't have an entire facility fee for Moana Springs. We've had some people who want to rent the whole building rather than just a pool, so rather than create a, what's a consolidation of à la carte items and making their fee seem really tough to follow, we just created a general Moana Springs Aquatics and Fitness Center fee. So it's a large range, but that gives us flexibility to rent to partners and things like that with the school district and those types of spaces. Our outdoor space, again, consolidating for measurements, so we're using less than an acre as a, as a measurement, rather than saying this particular space costs this much. If it's less than an acre, it costs this much. If it's one to two acres, it costs this much. If it's two to five acres, it'll cost this much. So there's a range for each of those items, but it just keeps it simple and flexible. So instead of someone asking, what does it cost at Cyan Park to do this space? They can, oh, if I need an acre at Cyan Park, I know it costs the same as this other park across town. One of the things we also added was to stay flexible and try to meet member kind of desires. We're seeing folks frustrated by the quarterly membership pass that we implemented for the Rec Connect and Moana Springs, if you remember from last year. So we're creating a, a monthly membership pass that has no commitment. It's a little bit higher rate just to help try to encourage people to go towards that annual commitment, but we're adding that and getting rid of the quarterly rate, which caused frustration administratively and with the customer when they would timeout unexpectedly. So we moved that to a month pass. The next one down is a commemorative purchase option and expansion. We've had a memorial tree process for quite some time. We've had some great ideas from the public who want to memorialize their loved ones in other ways, including skate park improvement. That was what was important, and that's how their, their child used the park, so they wanted to add something to the skate park to memorialize him and to add to the community. So we created a, a large range that would generally be cost plus a little bit of the effort that goes into it, but there's a, a space in there, so. And then the last piece is, again, try, kind, trying to be aware of when we have a large inventory of firewood and we're selling it. If we want to get rid of it quickly, it'll allow us to have a special rate. So yeah, this is a big deal. This is a big deal. So we've created this firewood, a range for firewood, rather than just having a hard $80 if we have a, a high inventory. If it gets real windy and a lot of trees goes down, we chop that up and make it available to the public to purchase for firewood, so. That, any questions?
Let's check in. Colleagues, does anyone have questions, or Mr. Olliet? Ms. Ebert?
So in regard to the, thank you for the presentation, by the way. In regards to the quarterly membership versus monthly, was there a cost increase for that as well, or is it just the kind of cadence of, you know?
There's not a, there's not a specific cost increase. It's a new, it's a new fee for the monthly.
Okay.
It's pretty reflective of what the quarterly fee is, a few dollars more per month, but it's, it's really close to what the quarterly, or the monthly would extrapolate into the quarterly.
Okay, okay, thank you. Oh, I did have one other question. Do we have any, like, statistics or any information on, like, how, how much reimbursement we get for any of our programs? If people get assistance through other kind of medical plans at their end? Do we have any information on that?
We do. I can give you some, some estimates, and I can also put together some information for council and get that out afterwards, but...
Okay.
The sliding scale, which we talked about a lot last year, has been taken advantage of and increased. But the sliding scale, which we talked about a lot last year, has been taken advantage of and increased our enrollment and membership. And our revenue has increased because of it. We've, we've threw an offset of revenue. I want to make sure this is not, we're not giving away money. We're just reducing the cost to those who need help. $269,000 has been accessed or saved from those folks who are in the poverty areas and need a hand up to access our facilities. While on the other end of the spectrum, folks who are having no problem paying the $60. Our membership's higher than it's ever been. On the senior side, which I know is very important, we have 1,100 people now taking advantage of our healthcare access program. Which was prior to us really making this a focus, we had 300 seniors using a membership. So, and we're making more money because of the implementation of this program.
So, those programs for seniors that are helping them pay for this, do we get actual revenue coming in for that?
So, their healthcare plan through Medicare reimburses us anywhere from $2 to $4 per visit. And usually, that's capped somewhere between eight to 12 visits.
Okay.
Prior to that, we were getting nothing and people were feeling they couldn't access it. So, it's really been a win-win.
Great. All right. Thank you.
Any other council colleagues? For my part, Mr. Olliet, I'll just tell you that I've had four people in the last two weeks tell me what a fantastic job you're doing in Parks and Recreation. So, different people from different walks of life had no reason to call me other than to say they really appreciate the work that you're doing, the leadership. They're thrilled, of course, with the Moana Springs Aquatic Center. That's easy. But a couple of them were, you know, talking about dog parks and trying to figure out how to integrate various uses in various areas. So, whatever you're doing, the special sauce, keep doing it. Thanks a lot. Appreciate you.
I did have one more thing.
Oh, one more thing. Come, Mr. Olliet. Don't go too far.
Yeah.
Chris, we'll get you up here next.
I wanted to know, like I know we have Relief Reno. Is there something we could set up to just help our Parks and Rec? Like a fund that people, businesses can donate to that can help us do some extra things? Maybe help us with field, flat field maintenance, things like that? Would it be possible to have something like that and kind of push that out there?
Yes. We're working towards that. Council last year funded Fund Development Manager, which Landon Miller has filled that role. And we've got some real ambitious projects we're going to put forward, you know, in the meantime while the money trees are growing.
Yeah.
That we can engage the community, engage legacy giving, things like that. Great partners at the Community Foundation. So, I'm hoping you'll get some information in the next few months on that. We're going to be presenting to Rec and Parks Commission about what he's working on. One of those ideas is to develop an endowment for our playground replacement.
Yeah.
Which we know is a challenge.
Yeah.
And we're never going to get ahead of it unless we try something different. So, that's just one, one thing we're looking at.
Great. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much, Mr. Olliet. Mr. Pingree. Your turn in the barrel.
Good afternoon, everyone. Chris Pingree, Director of Development Services. We are here today to talk about a few changes that we are proposing within the Development Services Department. Two different buckets here. We've got the Building Enterprise Fund and permitting fees. And then we'll discuss some of our planning and engineering fees. To kick this off, over the last handful of years since I've been here, our fee schedule that we post online for our prospective builders and developers has been, it's an 11-page document, very convoluted, very tough for our folks to even understand what those fees are associated to a project as they're bringing them in the door. So, over the last few months, our staff has gone back and reevaluated the fee schedule we had currently. And we have just consolidated the 11-page document into about a four-page document. So, the first we're going to talk about here is these are more related to all new and remodel construction throughout the, throughout the City of Reno. And what we've done, we took, this one chart was a three and a half page document. And we've consolidated those evaluations that you'll see in the left column of that chart. Instead of $0 to $100, $100 to $200, we have combined those numbers. So, from $0 to $2,000 and so on throughout the chart. Basically, we went back and did the math on all of those to make sure that we weren't misinterpreting what those dollar values mean somewhere in between. So, really, this is just a simplification of what we had currently to make it easier for our internal staff as well as our constituents that are coming in the door looking for estimates on projects moving forward. This slide is representing more of our supplemental fees. And so, these are more like your water heaters, your individual permits, things that aren't general, aren't valuation-based. Not a lot of major changes. It's just really a restructure of the document to simplify and recategorize the existing fees that we have that are currently approved now. And with this, as many of our, the other colleagues have spoke about today, is just fees that were historically left on that document that really had no business being in the building permit fees. They went to the appropriate departments and appropriate fee schedules that they are associated with. Planning fees, planning and engineering fees, highlighting again, after going through the Building Enterprise Fund position verifications, we had identified some things that were general funded versus Building Enterprise Fund. And so, now that that process has been cleaned up, we went ahead and tackled some of the items we have on our current planning fee schedule. The first bullet item here is the annexation fee. Historically, we charged $118 for an annexation application and processed. It really mirrors the conditional use permit process, which we charge at $3,300 for everything from the staff report to the NABs to the planning commissions to the entire process. $118 didn't even really process the application. So, we, we've just, historically, that's just where it lived and we have never brought that forward. So, we're bringing that forward this year to try and just make it, make it fair and make it comparable to the conditional use permit. Another, a new item we've added this year is separate fees for noticing. Historically, noticing has been included in an application for a land use application in process. And we have basically come down to a three-tiered system of the noticing fee that we want to charge. It's 250, 500, and 750 depending on the NRS required noticing requirements that we have to do for those specific projects. This gives us the ability to go back out and, you know, if, to recoup some of that money that goes out for noticing that the City of Reno and our planning staff is responsible for doing. Again, a cleanup of fees not related to planning and engineering. There was a handful of these, nothing significant, just fees, just fee, fees moved to the appropriate department. The one we'll talk most about here is the increased land use appeal fees. I've been in front of this body a handful of times to discuss and bring up appeal fees that we have for land use cases. We are proposing taking this, currently it is a $103 fee for a land use appeal. We are proposing a $500 fee for land use appeal. And we, after going through the data, we didn't just come up with the $500 of just throwing something at the wall. But what we've done is we've gone back and we've compared every jurisdiction within the region and what they currently charge for appeal fees. And I'll just kind of run through some of the list of City of Fernley, $750, Lyon County, 750, Douglas County, 956, random number. But with our neighboring jurisdictions, we are still, we are still, we are still cheaper and we are, it's still a more affordable rate. Considering the amount of time that goes into an appeal, $500 will probably never recoup the actual dollar amount that we have out there in relation to staff time that it takes to present an appeal. But we do feel that $500 is a fair and equitable number, especially comparing that to the other jurisdictions. You know, we've got, you know, down south, a lot of folks, they charge a higher rate on the front end and that kind of offsets some of those appeals. We don't feel that that's an adequate path forward either here of having to come back and bill people after an appeal. If an appellant came in and dropped off an application or an appeal to the clerk's office, trying to collect that money. We're not great bill collectors, so we'd like to kind of just keep that on the front end and not on the back end. That's pretty much it for, for our presentation, so I'm sure we'll have a couple of questions, but I'm here to answer.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Anderson, oh, sorry.
You're back.
Councilmember Anderson.
In, for a future review, do you think that there's a way that we could compile an average or even a cost for staff time for carrying out an appeal? Like how much it costs to gather everybody here during the evening for land use appeals? And just be able to, to show, because I've heard some rumblings in the community about this potential increase. And I think it would be very, very helpful for us to show how much an appeal actually costs the city in staff time compared to what we're charging. I think that that would be a really good delta to, to share with the community if it's possible.
I appreciate, I appreciate the comment. I've got some numbers for you here today of just, you know, this is just our internal staff. Like we haven't gone back down to take everybody in the room. I mean, we haven't gotten that far into the deep dive of what it actually costs. But the average appeal across the board over the last seven to 10 is $2,500 to $5,000 just in planning, engineering staff and the noticing requirements that goes in. So, we've had some at $2,500. We've had some that were upwards of $20,000 depending on the substantial project and the, the length of those meetings and, and there's a lot of variables that goes, that go into it. But on average, $2,500 to $5,000 is basically what it's costing the planning department alone. And we'll come back with the rest, with more information as just far as the other groups that are associated with, with an appeal. And we've got attorneys. We've got everybody in the room that, that, that have to be there to participate. So, and obviously, it is an NRS requirement to have all of those folks there. So, we will come back with, with a little bit deeper dive in the future.
That would be great. And then also, do we know what percentage of our land use decisions get appealed?
So, that's a, we do not have a percentage that I could quote. You know, historically, we've got, going back a few years, I think it was 2021, we had 14 appeals. Last year, we only had four land use appeals. This year, we're on a pretty record pace to, I think we're going to hit seven or eight by next meeting. So, depending on, it really depends on the project. And as we get into tighter, you know, infill is always the big one. We want to push for infill and every infill project has, has two sides of the story of who wants it and who doesn't. And so, the more infill and the tougher the land development parcels are, I think the more appeals that we're going to have.
Councilmember Ebert.
Yeah, I just want to give a comment on that particular thing about the filing of appeals. I know that in my ward, I've had some constituents reach out to me about filing appeals. And I've, you know, directed them to staff to, you know, get instruction on how to do that. And then I've had people call me back and tell me they can't afford the fee. And these are, you know, residential neighborhoods where a zoning has been changed and now an industrial commercial use is going in literally in somebody's backyard. They're allowed to operate 24/7. So, I don't think we should raise the fee on that particular thing. I know there's a lot of other things that we can increase. But I think that we are in public service and I think that we should make things like that attainable to everyone that lives in the community. And I understand that there's a large cost associated with it. But, you know, as, as the council member who, who, every school in her ward is a Title I school, I'm extremely sensitive to the financial aspects of these different fees. And I don't want it to become, you know, you can only appeal if you're wealthy. You can only appeal if you have attorneys. It should be, anybody can file an appeal. And I think that there'll really be a perception about, you know, how, like how we treat different classes of people and where development goes in. So, I really do not support increasing that. I want to keep it as affordable as possible to the community.
Councilmember Reese.
Thank you very much, Madam Vice Mayor. Mr. Pingree, thank you so much. A couple of things. One is sort of a comment to the City Manager's Office and then through her to you is that part of the reason why we haven't had a ton of questions on each of the individual department items that are related to fee increases or schedule changes is because over the last three years, your teams have really worked to clean up those things. I know that last year, Matt was really largely responsible for a really huge deep dive into some of our fees. So, it feels like we've fixed a lot of what we had and now we're down to really small nits and things here and there. Your presentation kind of reminded me of that because, you know, I looked at lots of them as just really, sort of as you said, changing the math, making sure it's short up. For you, Mr. Pingree, I want to ask first, have we done the outreach that always goes with making fee increases? Right? What I don't like to see happen is we go out and do something and four months later, someone comes and says, you never told us and you should have had us in the room and that sort of thing. So, tell me where we are with that piece of this puzzle.
Really, this is our proposed fee changes, right? And to where we get direction from this body to move that forward. Everything, with the exception of the appeal fee, it's pretty minimal in nature. All of our consultants that we've, we've, we've even briefly had the conversation with as far as the annexation cost. We haven't done an annexation in years and I don't see us doing another annexation in years. But I could be surprised that could come forward. But basically, coming back after this body and getting the feedback that we receive, we would go back out, I mean, and, and present this to our Builders Association group and those folks on the fee schedule just to make sure that we didn't miss anything before it is implemented.
Yeah. That's just what my ask is, is that whatever we do, that we're being very open and transparent about it so that everybody is aware of what's happening. You know, the most important thing we do each year as a body is our budget. And yet, we've had very few public, you know, folks, you know, commentators. Normally, we'll have a room full of people who have all measure of interest in the things. But when it comes to budget, people sort of check out. So, it really then relies upon us to make sure that we're representing our community the best of our ability. As to all the other fees that you proposed, everything seems fine to me, so I don't have any really concerns there. Thank you so much.
Councilwoman Dura.
Thank you. I wanted to comment on two things. One is this appeal fee proposal. Last year, we had a very in-depth conversation and you presented some similar information, Mr. Pingree, about the cost to staff. At that time, we agreed to double the fee from $50 to $100. It's a 100% increase. And at that time, we discussed leaving it like it was for about five years. The reason was, is to your point, we've had between four and 14 appeals per year. And it seems to be buying a lot of trouble with our publics for not a great bang for the buck. I mean, if we have five appeals, we're not bringing in a tremendous amount of money. What is important to me is that we retain access to our government. Appeals come in when somebody is building something, proposing to build something near somebody else. They're just living their life. They're not proposing to build something someone else is. And they're reacting to that and they're trying to make sure that their neighborhood is kept whole. And I'll give you a recent example. Right now, we have pending before us something that doesn't even go to Planning Commission, which is a Jiffy Mart over by the railies on Mayberry. And we've received 200 letters. Now, it doesn't, it's not going to get a public hearing unless they appeal. I mean, and, and the staff may come up with a permit that is perfectly acceptable or they may not. My point is, is that they feel strongly, it's just an example. No appeal's been filed and I don't, I'm not expecting one, but I'm giving it to you as an example that when something threatens a perception, that something's threatening a community. In this case, what I've heard mostly is children, pedestrian, children, accidents with traffic. The public needs an opportunity to speak out. And so, I feel strongly that to provide access, it's just like if we started charging for voting or we started charging high costs to defend yourself in court. I don't know that those are equal, but my main point is just that I think we need to retain access at a low price to be able to appeal to your government on something that you feel is unjust. And so, I'll leave it there for now, but I would not support increasing it after we just doubled it last year. But I am going to recommend a new fee that you might want to consider. I recommended this over five years ago and I don't know, maybe it's been implemented, but I'm not aware. So, you give out something called right-of-way permits. And that's for when people want to store stuff on the city's right-of-way. And if you've got a bigger construction company, they're going to know they need to get a right-of-way permit and they're going to be willing to pay whatever it costs. And I don't know what it costs today. You might be able to help me. But what I have found is a lot of people put stuff in the right-of-way. It might be mulch, gravel, dirt, any number of things on a temporary basis. And the only way it comes to our attention is through an enforcement case. Somebody called on someone else, put mulch, and this happens all the time in my neighborhood. I've never called on anyone. But the point of it is, is if we had a permit where you could have temporary use of the right-of-way, let's say for $25 for a two-week period, first of all, we'd take the people out of an enforcement case and we would generate more revenue for the city because people are doing this all the time. So, I'd love you to just evaluate it and see if, if that's something that might be useful to the city. Get some additional revenue, put people in the good graces instead of violation. I see Ms. Koski's come up, so maybe it's under your purview instead.
Yes, this Carrie Koski, Director of Public Works. We do have an encroachment permit for the right-of-way. That does follow under Public Works's fee schedule and that... That does follow under Public Works's fee schedule, and that does cover those items that you were just describing. As you, you and I have both been aware that sometimes people slip in and they utilize the right-of-way without getting a permit. So, we are trying to, we are very diligent to, as our inspectors are out and about, they try to keep a close eye on that, but we do have a fee for that, yes.
Right, but do you know what that is offhand, Ms. Kosky?
Yes, I do. The encroachment fee is $100 and, no, excuse me, $62.
Right. So, what I'm suggesting, often that's for a longer period of time. And what I'm suggesting is, and I suggested this a long time ago, was to have a shorter-term one, where you're just gonna have gravel, let's say for a week or two, in the right-of-way, and charge something like $25. It would be sort of like that water heater, I think it was $57 or something. But anyway, my suggestion is have a lower fee for a shorter time. Many more people, I think, would apply. So, it's just something for consideration. If you don't think it's worth it, fine, but if you think it could possibly be worth it, please take a look at it.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, thanks. And sorry, I thought that was under, Mr. Pingery, under right-of-way, but okay. Anyway, Mr. Pingery, I'm not supportive again this year, but I did support a doubling last year of the appeal fee. I'd like to see it stay the same. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Doer. I guess I see a different side of this, and I have, since I first got here, I was very supportive of raising this fee, and I understand the access to government, the access to appeals. But for me, it's about recouping the cost of doing business, and the whole reason I was in favor of it was the cost of an appeal, which is extreme, it's intensive for the city. So, I am in support of this, and I also don't think that the city of Reno is unique compared to other jurisdictions where they are charging more than we are. So, I think we are still in a good place with our public, and I hope they would understand in a $23 million deficit, or we need to start recouping our costs. And that's just where I am at. Other questions or comments?
Yes.
Councilwoman Anderson.
Just one. So, just building on what Councilwoman Doer was discussing, it causes me pause to know that a temporary right-of-way fee is the same as an appeal that triggers thousands of dollars in overtime. That just, does that not boggle anybody else's minds? I really do think that $100 for an appeal, we're listening to an appeal in a week or two on a unanimous decision at the Planning Council, or at the Planning Commission. It's gonna trigger thousands of dollars in overtime. So, it is really recouping a cost of doing business, and I think it's definitely fair to raise that fee. I understand, I definitely understand, Councilwoman Ebert, especially in your ward. I ju, it just, the cost of doing business in times like these where we're looking for $25 million to cut, I think that this is definitely a fair way to recuperate that, those costs.
Councilmember Ebert.
Yeah, just to reiterate on these fees, I understand costs of doing business, but we're not really a business. We're a municipality, and we offer services to people. And I think everybody should have equal access to the services we provide. And I understand wanting to recoup the cost of people's, employees' time spent on it, but that is the reason that they're here, right? That's their job description. So, I'm very protective of increasing fees to a point where people cannot afford it. They're being priced out of due process that should be available to everyone. I cannot support that. You know, we're discussing C-Tax, how it's flat, people are reducing what they pay for electricity, for other utility services, and then to increase this cost so significantly, I think will make it unattainable for people in my ward to have the same due process as others. And considering my ward has some of the most development coming in, and I would say the most changes in zoning, spot-changing to industrial commercial within residential neighborhoods, I think we need to be most sensitive to that population. They're the most affected by this, they can least afford it, and we are public servants here. It is our job to do due process for people that want to file an appeal. I think we need to be really mindful of that. There's other things, there's fees for permits, things like that, that's fine, that's the cost of doing business. But for somebody to have due process that lives here, that has something going in next to them, that it's not their project, they didn't get a chance to say yes or no, I think is just wrong. So, I can't support that.
Can I comment on that for just a minute? Over the last three years, we have worked really, really hard at building the best planning team in northern Nevada. I can say that hands down, I can stand, I can sit here and defend that all day long. The process that we have in place gives everyone an avenue to address this. Public comment, anyone can submit public comment. Our planning staff, before it goes to a NAB or a Planning Commission, or would be seen by this body, that is normally months of work, that that planner is doing their job on a daily basis, to make sure that those issues, complaints, things are mitigated during that process. And we have never had a better staff that takes all of those things into consideration. I mean, sometimes to a fault, we go down these rabbit holes of how are we gonna remediate this, or this, or this. They are amazing, and usually, when that, when it's fully baked enough to get to a NAB or a Planning Commission, 99% of those issues have been brought up, and all of those, all of the neighbors, anybody who has an issue with that, has that opportunity to bring it forward during the process. And I just want to make sure that everybody's, you know, kind of hearing that.
Yeah. Mr. Pingery, can I ask a question? This isn't just for residents, right? I mean, a lot of developers appeal too. I think that in the instance of the 7-0 unanimous, I mean, or it's not just residents, it's for everybody. So, it's for developers, it's for the applicant, it's across-the-board fair increase, right? Okay. Councilwoman Ebert.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, this is in no way a commentary on your staff. I know they do a great job. This is really just about accessibility, and I understand that it's the same fee for businesses, but individuals usually don't have the same financial resources. And again, we're not a business, we're not like selling commodities or anything, we're a municipality. So, I mean, if we want to have a sliding scale, or whatever, fine, but I also don't see appeals coming in here where somebody is just like, "Oh, I just wanted to file an appeal." You know, the last appeal we had for the Lakeside Apartments, or Lake Ridge Apartments, the appellant and the applicant have been meeting and making changes to the plans now. That's an opportunity that local residents might not have had if they couldn't afford the fee for the appeal. That's the kind of situation I want to avoid. We should absolutely be doing this so that people can come together and make tweaks where needed, so that we can do the best job for the community.
And I don't disregard any of your comments. I just want to reiterate the process, right? The process of Planning Commission, the process of the NABS, the process that is put in place to voice those opinions and to work with the staff and work with the developers along the way. That is in place currently today. Sometimes, we miss the window, and we don't get involved, and once it's a little too late, and we come forward, and the last chance is the appeal process. So, I do not disregard any of your comments, I completely understand.
Yeah.
So, we're gonna move on to Councilmember Doer, and then we're gonna move on with the presentation to next steps. Councilmember Doer.
Sure. I just wanted to clarify something, too. I think it's a false equivalency to say, providing easy access and due process is some slap on our staff. I think they do a great job. I think Ms. Ebert just used an excellent example, where it's not staff's purview, for example, to work through the fine details, but in this case, in the case of Lakeside, for example, they're having a very successful collaboration, to her point, would not have happened without an appeal process. So, most of the work, most of the work is happening outside of council and outside of this room, outside of staff. It's happening between the applicant and the residents, and we're gonna end up with a better project. So, I think, you know, let's hear it for better projects, let's hear it for easy public access to our systems, and we just heard from our Parks and Recreation folks, and they're saying, "We're not asking for our services to be underwritten, I mean, to be fully, fully remunerated." Like, the cost to operate the Moana Pool is going to cost us something like $300,000, well, actually, more now, $300,000 that the city's gonna pay. We're not, we're not getting full recovery of these costs, we're trying to provide a service. Again, you can get, you can pay full freight and join a private club, whatever, and pay what it costs, but here at the city, we're providing recreational opportunities to everyone. And I just, I think it's the right way to go. And, look, I've supported the other fee increases, even Parks and Rec, and even this one. But last time, what we said is, if we did an increase, it would go to CPI, and I wasn't expecting this kind of large increase. So, it's just, you know, I respect you and your department, Chris, and it's just, it's a different, I guess, philosophy or approach about the role of government and the response. These aren't people advocating for a project, these are people protecting their own property values, their own investments that they've made, or they may be renters as well. So, probably enough said, but I appreciate the opportunity to share my viewpoint.
Thank you. Councilwoman Martinez.
Thanks so much, Madam Vice Mayor, and thanks, Mr. Pingery, for the information. I think for me, I'm sensitive, obviously, to making sure that we collect as much public input as we can through our process. And I think from our conversations and just seeing the land use process play out these last couple of years, it does seem like there's been a concerted effort to try to increase those opportunities for folks, whether it is having the list server folks can sign up for to receive the developments that are coming in their ward, or into the city of Reno in the next few months, or allowing for public comment during our public processes. It does seem like at the beginning, at the front of the process, we do have those opportunities for individuals to be able to provide their input. I think the challenge comes with balancing the need to recover some of the costs that you're saying, and even in Councilmember Doer's example, even with this increase, you're saying that we're not gonna recover the costs based on the staff. There's still a deficit, even with this increase, if it does get approved. And so, last year, I was a little bit more hesitant in approving an increase to this land use appeal, but I do think that there needs to be more of an increase this year, and making sure that we still allow folks the possibility to do that, and being able to maybe provide more education to our community at the beginning, and being more active voice to include all of those comments from the get-go, and making sure that not just you and our staff, but also developers that are coming in with these applications, understand those needs from our community, and being firm about what our community is asking to present. So, I just wanted to put that on the record and say that.
Okay, I think we're moving into next steps.
Next steps, I mean, really, this as we present this.
I think that's actually Vicki.
Vicki's gonna carry on. Thanks, Vicki.
Vicki Van Buren, Director of Finance, for the record. So, this is the last part of this, just to kind of tell you what's coming forward in the future. So, the gold area boxes here are actual council items, where we'll be back in for, back in front of you at council, discussing various topics. But in between, we didn't list on here, are the additional monthly briefings with council, so we're still gonna do those. The next briefings with council will be the week of March 31st for the financial briefings, and I will have some final numbers for property tax, and hopefully, numbers for C-Tax as well. And we'll continue this process of building it out, but really, this is our baseline, this is the building point. Next meeting on March 26th, really important, the sewer fund discussion, because that is gonna drive the sewer budget, and where we move that. And then, April 9th will be the financial update, which will be a more formal update, again, here, in a brief format, just to kind of let you know any changes from what we've discussed today as we move forward. And then, May 5th is another full council workshop, where we will actually get into a lot of the capital projects. That one's gonna be focused more on that, and more of the recommendations from the city manager, as far as based on the conversations here today, and the conversations that we have at the next financial update as well. So, all of those items are considerations, and then that recommendation will come on May 5th, when I come back at that workshop, along with capital. So, questions?
Vicki, I just wanted to make sure that you explain the recommendation. We are absolutely not adopting a budget right now. We're, can you just tell us exactly what you're asking us to do today?
No, we're just asking for your priorities. That cloud that I, we prepared last year, that was based on the recommendations, the priorities that you said, council, these are our priorities. And so, we try to gauge the things that were requested and asked for based on that, and then the city manager actually makes the recommendations based on the input from this body, and that's what I bring forward on May 5th. Some of the things you saw today are, some of the ideas are out there, and we've got input from you, and I'll work with Manager Brian on what she sees, you know, going forward, and how to fill some of that gap, and what those ideas are. And we will continue to have conversations in that space, even maybe on April 9th, to have some conversations on that, at the update, to have some feedback at that point as well. And so, on the May 5th will be that, the recommendations of, from the manager's office on what she's recommending for the budget. The budget itself won't go to a public hearing until May 21st. So, May 21st is the actual day where you adopt the budget and the fee schedule. So, if there are changes in between May 5th and May 21st, we implement those, and we move forward, and it's just a working document, and we continue on.
Okay, councilmembers. I see Councilmember Ebert for some parting comments or questions.
Yeah, just want to reiterate that we need to be accessible to everyone in our community, just, I can't stress that enough. Again, this is not a business, we're a municipality, we're in the business of serving the community. And if we make it unattainable to people, then we're failing in that. And I understand the comments about they're charging more in other areas, but, you know, I remember that expression, "If everybody else jumped off a cliff, would you do it too?" Just because other people are doing it doesn't make it right or fair to the people that live in the community. I cannot support increases, you know, I just, I think back to all the appeals we've had, and I can't even recall a business appealing another business. It's always been people that live in the neighborhood, people in the community, just average citizens. And, you know, if we price them out, then we're just telling people that you actually don't have a voice in your community because you can't afford it. And if we have things going on in lower-income neighborhoods, that's gonna be disproportionately affecting them in that regard as well. So, just in the interest of doing our job as public servants and being accessible to everyone in the community, for the process of making projects better because of collaboration, and because of people having to come together and make accommodations through the appeals process. And I understand the planning department does a great job, but there are times when people just don't find out about things, or they didn't know about the Planning Commission meeting, or what have you, and that's their opportunity to have a voice in that, or maybe they just can't go. I don't know what people's work schedule is. We have 24-hour businesses in this town, and I have people that work at the casinos that have, you know, odd shift times. So, we need to have this available for people to have a say in what happens in their community. So, thank you.
Other councilmember comments?
Madam Vice Mayor, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay.
I move direct staff to move forward with the development of the fiscal year '26 budget and fee schedule, based on feedback from council.
Second.
We have a motion of second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much, and I believe we have, we're moving into RDA.
Yes. So, again, Vicki Van Buren, Director of Finance, for the record, we're moving into RDA. Do I need another city clerk? Are we good to go? Keep going. Yeah, okay. So, redevelopment, I'm gonna give you basically the accounting side of it. I'm sure a lot of your questions are regarding projects and things as we move into this space. This is really, my piece of this is actually very small, just to kind of tell you where we are, what it looks like. In this space, we haven't had a lot of money until recent years to even work with, so that's some of the good news at this meeting. But my piece of this, as far as this, is really more of the accounting, and I'll defer to Brian and to Ashley on the operational stuff for that. But redevelopment has two areas. They're listed on here. Redevelopment one is in that yellow area.
Vicki, hold on just a second, I'm sorry. Do we have the slides for these on our? I'm sorry, do we have the slides for these on our, on Prime Gov?
You should, yes.
You can continue, sorry.
Okay. So redevelopment area one is mostly, it's in the downtown core. So that's the yellow area on this map. And redevelopment two is spread out around to seven different areas, including an area out near Boomtown. So if you start with redevelopment agent, we'll see one. This is just a zoom in of that area to show you. It is really dedicated right downtown to the core of the city here. Redevelopment Agency One was established in 1983, and it expires in 2043. It's, the downtown area includes the parking garage on Sierra Street. The garage is maintained by Colliers. And any garage, the garage revenues are pledged to debt. So any excess revenue that we receive has to be transferred to the debt fund to fund that debt. A fixed amount of motor vehicle privilege tax was given to RDA one when it was established. It's a very small amount, you'll see it as we come up. And that just continues at the same amount every year. Miscellaneous expenses that you see in this fund are from repairs and maintenance on the garage. And there is a debt fund associated with this. There are bonds that were issued for various projects over the years. Those bonds mature in a couple of years. So we're almost out of debt in this one. So redevelopment Agency One, just to give you a brief overview of what it looks like, there hasn't been any extra, there haven't been extra funds for the general fund from property tax up until the projections for next year. So after the recession, it was hit really hard. And so we really struggled to make the debt payments in redevelopment one. There was a time where we were looking at restructuring and doing some other things. We actually, I believe, kicked off here, but I believe it was in fiscal year 22. Came to council and we asked to take a loan. A promissory note was done for redevelopment Agency Two over to One. And that was $1.2 million just to bridge this gap until we knew we would get to a point where the, the property tax increment was coming in and could pay for that debt. So that's what we did. And so on here, what we're projecting is the property tax in excess of what's needed to pay the debt. So the debt fund will be the next one. But here you can see we're starting to see some revenues come in here. We're starting to ship the salary and benefits so that the staff that we currently have dedicated to redevelopment can work in both project areas as this one becomes more online and available for projects. And then this is the debt fund for redevelopment one. So you can see on here, it's really, we have to maintain a certain balance in here, and it's around $2.1 million. That's due to the, the debt requirements. So we have to have a reserve in there. That is maintaining going forward, but then the excess can now go over to the general fund and actually fund projects. So first time that that's really occurring. And then the other item on here, you'll see the loan pay off to RDA Two. So at the end of this current fiscal year, so I'll be back with the fourth quarter augmentation. I'll be asking this body to approve us to pay off that loan. So we're able to pay the loan back to RDA Two. And now the only outstanding debt are just the bonds in here, and those will pay off in two years. So we're going to start to see a lot of progress in this space as we move forward. And this just kind of gives you a look. We just had the, this updated. We hired a contractor to go out and really do an update on this. They had updated a few years ago. And so we updated this in the fall based on the new projects that have come to the area. So there are a lot of things like the ballpark apartments and things that have come online. And then they also look out and work with Brian McCardle to figure out when they think other projects are going to come online. And they build out the model of what the tax increment looks like going forward. This is in redevelopment Agency One. And so you can see that the, that there's a line on there that shows the debt payments. And so that debt pays off in '27. Tax increment above that is available. And then after '27, it goes away until '36. In '36, what that comes back as, that's the baseball agreement. So the baseball agreement is $1 million a year. It's currently being paid out of RDA Two. RDA Two expires in '35. So when that one expires, it comes back over to this one and continues out until it ends in '43. So a lot of good space here for work and projects in that area for that team. So redevelopment two, again, this is just a map to reorient you to, this is a different area, different tax increment coming in because it's based on the projects that are in these areas. And when you look at it, it was established in 2005, and it expires in 2035. It was established after, NRS changed in that when this one was established, if you establish after a certain date, and I don't remember the exact date, it's limited to 30 years. When redevelopment two, I mean redevelopment one was done, it was 30 years. And then it was extended for two additional extensions of 15 years. So it's going to run 60 years. That's not available to this one as NRS currently is written. It would have to be changed. Seven different areas, including Cabela's here. The full, the property tax stuff fully cover the baseball agreement. And at one time, that was an issue in this one. And so the general fund, the real, the city general fund was covering some of that at some point. But these have really come online. One of the things I do want to caution is this was an area that was hit hard during the recession. So in the event we do go back to a recession, these would be areas that we would see impacted probably pretty quickly because that is something that happened last time. There's a small little bond outstanding for Cabela's, and that matures in 2035. So property tax on this one, you can see a lot of increment coming into this one, estimated around $12 million for next year. There's salary and benefits associated with the positions. And the positions include some of, there's 6.25 because there's some percentage of people charged over there. So 6.25 positions working in the space split between these two agencies now. And the baseball agreement is the $1 million. It remains that million until the end of this. You look at the debt fund, it's that very small little Cabela's bond that's in there. And it's actually for the, the museum inside of Cabela's with the animals. You look at RDA Two tax increment going forward, again, a lot of increment. This is the space, let me go back one slide to a couple of slides. This is the space where we're doing the work, at the site work for the teardown of the old police station because that does qualify as blight and getting that area cleaned up for security and blight. It does qualify, that is fully budgeted in here in fiscal year 25, the current year. So that's the $10 million that you see here. So that project will continue and is fully funded through here. And this is, again, what it looks like on those projections based on the known projects that we are aware of coming forward, the debt service. And then this debt service would pick up on the other one once this one ends. And so I'm sure there's probably questions, but there are probably questions on operational, but I'll hang out for a minute.
Counsel, I'm sorry, I have to go to the other screen. Councilmembers, do we have questions on this?
I have a quick question, Vicky. On the 10.5 capital improvement project, I missed what you said. I know it's for the fire station, but is that for the demolition and the architectural?
Demolition and the site work and a portion of the architectural to figure out how much it would cost and such.
No construction, no?
Actually, I'm sorry, it is just for the demolition and for the site work because it's just for that blight work. For the architecture work, we used a portion of the bond. So that was a portion, the $2 million for the, the fire station design was part of the original bond that was the pool in the public safety center. So $2 million of that is for that. This is dedicated just to the site work and the demolition to get that site ready.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Vice Chair.
Councilwoman Dewar?
Mayor. Yeah, question, it was similar topic. Could you go back a couple of slides? It was the one where you talked about the fire station demolition. I thought it's upcoming on a council agenda, and I thought it was just a little over $3 million. But you said something about $10 million here, 10.5.
We did, we budgeted $10 million. I'm gonna ask Carrie Kosky to come up and kind of explain the cost outline on that.
Carrie Kosky, Director of Public Works. Yes, the, the budget, original budget amount was $10 million. We have not spent that amount. And, and the, the contract that is coming to council for the demolition will bring the total that we are anticipating spending is around $7 million.
I guess I don't understand. So this line item is $10,500,000. But I thought you said, when she was explaining what this was, she said that's for the demolition. But on the upcoming council, it says 3.5 million, I think, something like that for the demolition.
Correct, correct. That will be on top of this, yes. Because Director Van Buren just reminded me, we had the abatement that also occurred. So that came out of, out of this RDA funds as well.
Okay, but is the budget, is it just a budget number? Or is this an actual cost number, estimated cost for what we're going to do this year related to the fire station? I mean, you're demoing the police station, right?
Councilmember Dewar, I can, I think, address the question. Ashley, Attorney Assistant City Manager, for the record. The original allocation from this body based off of staff, estimated costs for site prep, grading, demolition, asbestos abatement, was estimated to be at that $10,500,000, which is what this body allocated during last fiscal year's budgeting process. At this time, with the contract that will be coming forward, expenditures are anticipated to be right about that $7 million mark. There will still need to be some additional site work that will be done from a grading standpoint before the property can be prepared for any sort of future development. So we still anticipate that $10 million and some change to be the total cost for site work, demolition, prep, asbestos abatement, all things related to getting that property site ready.
The contract coming up is just one part of that, I guess.
That's correct, yes. There are multiple contracts associated with the site prep work, and so this is just one piece of that.
Okay, thanks.
I guess I have another question too. And this is a global question, probably. We're starting to see money in these spaces of RDA One and RDA Two. And I think we need to be really clear on what we can use this money for. And I think I heard Ash, Assistant City Manager, Attorney, talk a little bit about it. Can't be used for maintenance. It's the same for both RDAs, right? You don't have different rules and so.
Yes, it's the same space. And, and Brian and his team, you know, they're, they're going to come forward with the projects. And this is really kind of the ramp up to that, so I'm gonna turn that over.
And I guess that's my bigger question. I, I hear in some of our other council meetings about these projects that are going to be coming forward. Can you give us like a sneak peek of what that might look like? And, thank you.
So Brian McCardle, Revitalization Manager, for the record. So in that 1990 redevelopment document, and it's kind of reflected in RDA Two's founding document, it gives the agency a set of tools and guidelines and goals where the money can be spent. And that's increasing experiences, improving the attractiveness of the area, removing blight, pursuing economic development opportunities, working with private entities to develop land, remove blight, do pre-site development. So what it doesn't include is sort of maintenance and services. It's really just, it is a tax fund, tax allocation fund, to drive economic development and boost economic base in the area. And so anything that hits those guidelines could be eligible under RDA. And so we will be bringing a list of projects, improvements to our plazas, improvements to the river path, potentially streetscape improvements, things like that, based on our art plan, our placemaking plan, our river plan. And those will be funded with RDA. And so we'll bring back a capital improvement plan that lists most of those and how those funds will be spent.
So the balances that are in there now, that's where the, these, where the money is going to come from to fund those capital projects. And then when we look at the projects that are coming in for TIF, that's money in the future.
That's money in the future. They will create their own tax increment that they then use to help support their own projects.
So just to be clear, we're not asking developers or projects or people to come in and apply for this money now. This is money that we are going to use on our capital or our redevelopment area space for capital improvement projects.
That is correct. We currently don't have any obligations other than the ballpark debt to expend those money on any past projects or any sort of private developments. All new private developments will come in and ask for tax increment assistance. And then we will negotiate the deal, and they will get the support they need to finish the projects.
Okay.
From future tax dollars.
Clears up some of the confusion at some point. But congratulations, you get to be the, the bearer of great news in this presentation.
Hope so.
This day.
It's about to be the most popular city of Reno employee.
Councilmember Anderson.
That's all. He's going to be the most popular employee we have.
Other council members? I'm sorry, I'm looking at the gov site, the website. Councilmember Ebert, do you have questions?
Yeah, I do. I apologize, I had to step in the back for a second. So I have a question about the, the lot we're selling, the Record Street facility. And, you know, we're paying for the demo there. Is any of that being paid out of RDA funds?
Yeah, Brian McCardle, again, for the record, thank you for the question. So that is a city of Reno-owned property. However, doing the pre-development, removing the blight, that is an expense that is eligible under redevelopment funds. And so the redevelopment agency has offered to pay for the demolition of that site to be reimbursed through the city's funds upon close of escrow. So the redevelopment agency is using its funds to support the demolition. But the redevelopment agency will recoup those funds when the property closes and the funds are transferred.
Okay, so it'll be paid for out of RDA. And then if the sale closes contingent on federal funds, then the RDA will be paid back.
Correct.
Okay. And I wanted to know what kind of requirements there are for, like, what's considered blight?
So blight is very subjective. I would say anytime you have a nuisance activity or anything that is currently underutilized that could have a higher and best use. And that could include parking lots, former buildings, single-story buildings that are underutilized that could be possibly causing a nuisance, but could have a higher potential activity and higher and best use.
Okay, so not necessarily actually blight, just that it could be used better?
Yes.
Okay. And again, I'm sorry, I was in the other room for a minute. Was downtown, like area, like Harrah's Building, that's something I keep bringing up, the fire station. We really need to have a couple of fire stations built, really. Are those projects eligible for redevelopment funds? And are they being reviewed at all currently?
So city facilities for municipal use are not eligible under RDA. But recreation facilities would be. So if we wanted to build a new pool downtown, we could definitely support it through redevelopment funds. However, expansions to city hall, fire stations, those are municipal uses. Those don't boost the income tax base. Those don't increase the economic base in downtown.
But what about something like the Harrah's Building? If we could figure something out there to do something with that facility, would we be able to use RDA funds?
So that is a privately owned site. They've been trying to work with us, but fortunately, with our eligibility, they cannot negotiate or discuss with us while it's in foreclosure, or they don't have site control. Harrah's got out of bankruptcy last Friday. And so we're starting those conversations. It'll likely be that they ask for some sort of assistance, similar assistance to what other developers are asking for. And we'll have to go through the analysis and the BUT4 test to figure out what their true needs are to get that project fully completed. But it would be eligible. We cannot, through the city or the redevelopment agency, go in and dictate any removal because it's still privately owned. That is a harder mechanism.
I guess what I'm getting at is like if the city were to purchase it or something like that, like if it were to become part of, you know, something that the city owns so that we could do some type of redevelopment there, the way that the city would like.
It wouldn't be impossible. It would just be expensive.
Yeah, yeah, of course. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Other council members? Councilmember Dewar?
Yeah, thank you. Brian, can you stay for a moment? My question is this, I got a little bit confused with your answer to the last questioner. On one hand, you said, well, we can't do it, that's city-owned property. And then you said, we can't do it, that's privately owned property. So what property is eligible for use of these funds?
I would say, I think if, if I'm understanding your question, any, the redevelopment agency has the ability to purchase and dispose a property if it's has the ability to purchase and dispose of property if it's in the strategic goals of redevelopment. So any property downtown, if the redevelopment agency sees value in it, could make an offer and purchase a piece of property, a property, building, anything.
We need to own it through the redevelopment agency in order to work on it? Is that what you're saying?
The redevelopment agency would be the function in which we purchase the buildings, and then the redevelopment agency would help dictate its future either through a future public-private partnership or to develop it itself. We own and operate the parking gallery downtown. That is something, the RDA purchased the land, built the structure, manages the parking gallery, the revenues and the tenants in the space. That is a situation where the RDA does go in and own and operate.
And yet, you said that private developers are preparing asks or requests from the redevelopment agency. I mean, we've already heard from the GSR. So are you saying the GSR, the portion of it, would have to become redevelopment property? That's just where I'm just getting confused. I know you're going to have a special discussion on this, but right now, I just want to leave with some clarity.
In that participation program, which is essentially how we do public-private partnerships with private development, there is a program in there called Tax Increment Financing Assistance. So developers would come in and ask for assistance in financing their project. In that scenario, we would use that program to go in, find that BUT4, the assistance of the RDA, this project would never get built. We would never see the impact, the development, the job creation, and the future property tax generated if this project isn't financed. And so they ask for assistance through the redevelopment agency. We go through, prove that it is in fact this project would never occur, and we find a way to help finance those projects with redevelopment funds.
So there's not a clear, if it's city-owned, you can or can't do it, or if it's private, you can or can't do it? It's not that clear. You can do it in certain circumstances, is that it?
Yeah, if it supports economic development and it supports primarily development, yes. If, what I'm trying to say is...
Answering your last questions, on one hand, you said we can't help Harrah's because it's private. And previously, you said, we can't work on city hall because it's publicly owned. So that's where I was getting confused.
Sounds like there's going to be lots of room of her questions in our training upcoming.
Okay, that's what I'm offering to wait. But I just thought there was a simple yes/no answer, so I guess not.
So Counselmember Dur, if I could, I'm going to try to be brief and give a little bit of clarity. When Mr. McCartell was mentioning about how the city can't assist, the way in which the redevelopment agency would assist is by way of a TIF application. So we can assist by way of someone submitting their application, us reviewing the deal points, bringing forward to council for adoption, what they make off of property tax and those deal return points to them. The delineation is if a property is not producing property tax because the city owns it or because it is a nonprofit, they would be ineligible because they don't create increment in which to return back to the project.
Okay, thank you.
Name and title for the record, please. Ashley Attorney, Assistant City Manager.
Counselmember Ebert, do you have another question?
I did. I put my hand up, and we talked about a lot of it. One second, hold on unless we train. Oh, yeah. Are there any projects now that are redevelopment that City of Reno has completed that, you know, we could review and see if we wanted to dispose of them?
Brian McCartell, for the record, the only, the redevelopment agency does own some property and assets. We own the asphalt parcel next to Believe Plaza, and the idea would be in the future to possibly get that redeveloped.
Okay.
And the redevelopment agency also owns the parking gallery. It generates revenue from the parking gallery through parking revenues as well as the tenants that are in that building. And in theory, you could sell that to a private operator in the future at a market rate. Those funds would go back into the redevelopment agency, not into the city. And so those funds could get redeployed or purchase another project downtown.
Okay, I do have one more question. So if a project, if something gets moved across town, like, let's say, a stadium or something like that, and the area is currently paying fees, and it gets moved into an RDA area, would we lose the taxes that were generated before the project was moved?
I'm not entirely sure of the question. I mean, you can't move a project, but I think what you're asking is, you, the city general fund will always get the tax revenue created from the base before the property is improved. That's how we freeze that tax base. And so every new dollar created, every development project creates new property tax, that gets put into the redevelopment agency. But the taxes generated before the project moves there would, as they are now, would continue to go to the city, the county, general funds.
So, but let's say it was a project outside of an RDA area, we're currently getting taxes separately for that, and then that changes location into the RDA, we would be losing out on the tax from the other area, right? It would be shifting into the RDA?
Yeah.
Ashley Attorney, Assistant City Manager, for the record. Property tax is assessed based off of the parcel. And so the parcel, regardless of the project, will always exist in the area that it exists. So in your example, let's say you have an arena in Damone Ranch. And so whatever parcel that arena is on will continue to be assessed into the general fund regardless if the arena is there or if someone builds a second arena somewhere else. The property value is always going to stay with that parcel. So projects are a more difficult way. I would caution you not to look at a project and look at the parcel that's associated with it.
Okay, thank you.
If I could, if, Madam Vice Mayor, if I could just, I think I see the question that Councilmember Ebert is asking. It's like, if you're, this isn't sales tax. What we're talking about is, or what I think what you're alluding to are things like star bonds. And star bonds, so if you have the example of a target that's located outside the area, and then it moves into the area, and it generates sales tax outside of the area, and that goes to schools and everybody, when it moves into the area, that goes to the payment of the bonds. And that's, so I think that's maybe what you were referring to, and to ACM Attorney and Brian's comments, is property tax operates differently. It's not, it's not based on sales tax. So you're not going to have the same, kind of like the cannibalization of the sales tax or the cannibalization of the property tax, because ultimately, whatever's generated in terms of that tax will either go to the agency or to the city. So it doesn't, it doesn't go elsewhere, if that makes sense.
Okay, so when you say it goes to the agency or it goes to the city, if it goes to the agency, then we can't use that for...
It has to be used for agency types of blight, you know, remediation efforts, redevelopment efforts, yeah.
Okay, so that's kind of what I was getting at, is that, you know, it moves from, like, being able to use in the general fund to just the RDA, correct?
Yeah, the, yes, yes.
Okay, so if a project were to move into an RDA area, the city would then potentially no longer be able to use the revenue generated outside of the RDA area because it would be then transferred to the RDA?
It's, again, it's, it's the difference between maybe a sales tax and a property tax. I mean, to the extent that we're talking about a physical asset, like a building, you're not moving a building from point A to point B. You may be moving a business.
That's, yeah.
Right, but the business is generally paying, like, sales tax. The property tax element is not tied to that business. It's tied to the infrastructure that goes into the place that it's built.
Okay.
So that's the, so I just want to make sure you're clear in your mind the difference between like a sales tax or a sales tax generating business that moves. That's not this. That's more of a star bond type of issue versus a property tax, you know, business that moves from one building to another. It, you don't pay property tax based upon your commercial activity. You base, it's paid upon based upon what was in the ground.
Yeah.
Both in terms of the improvements in the land.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're about three minutes over here. Is there, is, are there any other questions?
I apologize.
No, you're okay. I'm just wondering if you can take this offline maybe and get some, get some answers, and we can move into a motion that is on the screen.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I move to direct staff to move forward with the development of the FY26 budget based on feedback from the board.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, Madam Clerk, I think we are on council comments for the RDA board.
Yes, ma'am. So sorry, my computer's still loading. We are going to move on to C1 redevelopment agency comments.
Council members' comments? Comments? Okay.
Yeah, I do have comments. Okay, yeah. I just think it would be prudent to allow council members to get information from our legal staff.
You absolutely can, and you can also attend all the briefings that are offered to all of us that we attend to. You can absolutely meet with council.
I do. I didn't realize my attendance card was reported to you, but I do.
Counselmember Ebert, would you like to make a comment? Is that your comment?
I am actually making a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. I think that it would benefit all of us to get the clarity on these questions right now as we're discussing redevelopment as it's relevant to the topic. And I don't understand the digging in heels to not hear relevant legal advice from our city attorneys. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Council members, do you have other questions or comments? Okay, we will close. A motion to adjourn.
No, sorry, we still have closing public comment for the RDA, which is item D1. We did receive one comment, which has been distributed to council and uploaded to the meeting portal, one letter of opposition. So with that, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn. RDA.
I'll make a motion to adjourn the RDA meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All those opposed? Okay, we'll move in back to regular city council meeting. And do we have any closing public comment, Madam Clerk?
We did receive one letter of correspondence. Again, that has been distributed to the Reno City Council. Oh, I apologize. Yes, one letter of correspondence has been distributed to the Reno City Council as a part of the record, and with that, we have no additional comment registered. We're looking for a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Make a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, thank you very much.